So, good evening. The School Board of the City of Manassas is meeting this evening on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, for a special meeting. The meeting will be conducted virtually as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708A3 due to restrictions on public gatherings issued by the state and federal governments. I call this meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Garza, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Seaberg.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Yeah, won't unmute.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Howlingsworth.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Osorio Flores.
Here.
Ms. Tanoli.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions and deletions to the agenda this evening? Uh, Dr. Newman?
We can't hear you.
I guess you missed all of that.
Yep, you could do it twice.
Okay. Um, under just, uh, action, we're gonna move, return to learn, we're gonna move that to discussion. And then, under the action agenda, we're gonna add four, um, items to that. The first item is return to in-person learning for school-dependent learners, select CTE programs in pre-K through 4th grade. The second item is return to in-person learning for grades 5 through 12. The third item will be behind-the-wheel driver's education instruction. And the fourth bullet will be spectators at sporting events.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Newman. We appreciate that. And school board members, do note those changes to the agenda, please. Next on the agenda, announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Al Radford, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Good evening, Vice Chair Seaberg. To all of our other school board members, good evening to each of you. Um, I am here tonight to do, as you said, um, present our, um, spotlights and our announcements. I, first of all, want to welcome all of our guests that have joined us, um, tonight to be recognized. So hello to each of you, and we will go ahead and get started. We have a full agenda tonight. So yes, tonight, we are pleased to present Apple and Pear Award winners for this quarter. Social distancing won't allow us to be live at this time, but they have joined us virtually. I hope that as I read brief, um, information about each one, many of you will reach out to them to thank them for the work they do on behalf of our school community. Our Apple Award winners represent members of our instructional staff in the division, and each person was nominated by one of their peers. Pear Award winners, okay, Pear Award winners are employees who support the teaching and learning environment in many other ways, often behind the scenes. Like the Apple Award, they too are nominated by one of their peers. So we will begin with our Apple Award recipients tonight. First, we have from Baldwin Elementary School, Ashley Slaney, who is an instructional technology training specialist. Ms. Slaney is always there to help her staff navigate their way through any technology storm. Not only does she help navigate the way and help with technology troubles, she always has a positive attitude and is willing to listen to the staff's new technology discoveries, even though she already knows, um, them herself. She can be relied on to be there and fix whatever is needed. Congratulations to Ms. Slaney. Next, we have Jenny Dean Elementary, Diana Richardson, 3rd grade teacher. Ms. Richardson works tirelessly to make sure her team has everything they need for planning, organizing, supply pickups, and general support. She has been an awesome team lead that encourages and ensures collaboration and teamwork. Congratulations, Ms. Richardson. Next, from Hayden Elementary, we have Susan Geiger, a special education teacher. Ms. Geiger joined the Hayden Special Education Team a year ago. Since then, she has been an invaluable team player and has become a gifted educator. Ms. Geiger is a beginning teacher with an outstanding future in, in, in education. Hayden is quite fortunate to have her as a part of the Hayden Hawk team. Welcome to you, Ms. Geiger, and congratulations on your nomination tonight. From Round Elementary School, let's see, we have Leslie Maddick, a special education teacher. Leslie Maddick is a special educator at Round Elementary who works with students with specific learning disabilities, both within and outside of the regular education classroom. Ms. Maddick recognizes that the most important thing when beginning intervention with her students is to create and nurture an individualized relationship with each student and to provide encouragement, support, structure, and expectation in a way that each student can relate to. Congratulations, Ms. Maddick. From Williams Elementary, we have Erica Rangel, a 3rd grade teacher. Ms. Rangel works to create a collaborative professional learning community culture as the leader of her PLC team. Ms. Rangel was recently selected as Oregon Education's Math Teacher of the Month for January. Ms. Rangel has demonstrated flexibility and tenacity in learning new technology and applying new math concepts to her teaching. She regularly shares strategies and best practices with her team in support of all students. She takes advantage of all math resources and applies them thoughtfully to whole and small group instruction. Congratulations to you. Now, from Baldwin Intermediate, we have Carolyn Nesbit, music teacher. Ms. Nesbit is an amazing ray of sunshine at Baldwin Intermediate School. She has embraced her virtual teaching platform to provide students with outstanding opportunities to enhance their knowledge of music and chorus. Her virtual chorus concert gave students the opportunity to show off their hard work and went above and beyond expectations this year. Baldwin Intermediate students, staff, school, and MCPS TS are all lucky to learn and work with such an amazing teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Nesbit. From Mayfield Intermediate, we have Patricia Torres Gonzalez, who is a 6th math and science teacher. Ms. Torres Gonzalez is one of the kindest, most hardworking people anyone has ever met. One colleague commented that having a teacher like Ms. Torres Gonzalez at Mayfield has made her days brighter, her lessons more engaging, and increased her involvement in school activities. Ms. Torres Gonzalez is exceptionally creative in her teaching approach, setting high standards for students and motivating them to exceed those standards. Congratulations to you. From Metz Middle School, Vivy Shaw, art teacher. Ms. Shaw creates a warm and welcoming environment in her classroom. She facilitates lessons with students that are highly engaging and relatable, as well as flexible to meet student needs. She has a great depth of content knowledge and passion for teaching and learning as evident by the excitement she shares while working with her students. Congratulations, Ms. Shaw. And from Osborne High School, we have Bethany Allison, who's a math teacher. Ms. Allison has something that great teachers possess to make every student feel good about themselves. She's a fantastic math teacher, but more than this, she creates a great learning environment in her Osborne High School classroom where students feel safe and respected. By providing opportunities for students to develop a personal connection and love of learning, Ms. Allison has become a strong model for many of her fellow educators. Congratulations to you, Ms. Allison. Thank you to all of our Apple Award winners on tonight. Um, you can use your responses at the bottom of your screen and give all of them a round of applause. All right, so now, we have our Pear Award recipients, and as I said, these are our supporting players behind the scenes. So we'll begin with Baldwin Elementary School, Ms. Michelle McKenzie, who is the school office associate. During this unusual school year, Ms. McKenzie has showed up and in the building every day to assist Baldwin's families and staff. Ms. McKenzie knows her school's families, their circumstances, and will go the extra mile to help them. Her connections to the community have greatly benefited Baldwin students and their families, and we so appreciate you. Thank you so much. From Jenny Dean Elementary, we have Robin Parker, who works in the pre-K, um, department as an instructional assistant. Dean says that Mrs. Parker is the best instructional assistant. She goes above and beyond in all she does. She communicates well and has a positive attitude. She's a fun person, completely dedicated to her work. Dean truly feels very fortunate to have Ms. Parker in the pre-K blended program. Congratulations to you, Ms. Parker. From Hayden Elementary, we have Catherine Lee, who is the technology support specialist. Catherine Lee has gone above and beyond in helping everyone and anyone with technology issues. Whenever she is asked for help, Ms. Lee replies promptly and offers any sort of assistance that is required and appropriate. Her peers are so glad that they have an incredibly competent and efficient IT person helping them during this period of distance learning. They say she is simply amazing. Congratulations, Ms. Lee. From Round Elementary School, we have Liliana Horkera, translator and interpreter. Ms. Horkera is the round translator, um, by title, but she is so much more than that. She's an integral part of the admin office, supporting anyone in need of help, whether it is a parent calling, needing direction on family support, technical support, or counseling. She always jumps in to be the first to network for them and set them off on the right track. Congratulations, Ms. Horkera. From Williams Elementary School, Cindy Rich, the school reception associate. Ms. Rich welcomes everyone who wel, who enters Williams with a warm smile. Ms. Rich works with teachers and families to provide a point of contact for student supplies. She has assisted with device and internet information distribution. Ms. Rich, um, ensures that safety protocols are followed as all staff and parents enter through the main doors of the school and is an appreciated staff member at Williams. Congratulations to you, Ms. Rich. From Baldwin Intermediate, we have Iliana Ruiz, uh, school admin associate 2. In these very interesting days of virtual learning, there are unique challenges that many of staff members have never, our staff members have never faced before. Uh, Ms. Ruiz works tirelessly with Baldwin Intermediate families to translate and bridge the language gap on a daily basis. She does this with her many organizational and technology skills, as well as her communication skills, which always provides pleasant and professional customer service to the staff, families, and community. I love it. Congratulations, Ms. Ruiz. And from Mayfield, our other intermediate school, we have Susan Gudowski, 6th school administrative associate 1. Susan Gudowski has been a rock star this year. Although there have been several bumps along the way, she has stepped in and helped with no questions asked. She helps out anywhere she's needed and does it with a smile and a laugh. Congratulations, Ms. Gudowski. And from Metz Middle School, Nidia Ziliaks, a manager in training. Ms. Ziliaks has been called an amazing manager in training. She has been working nonstop since school closed in March due to the pandemic. She goes above and beyond to see that the children are smiling and happy. She works her magic every Monday, moving the curbside food distribution line with ease, all while assisting MCPS families and the community in English and Spanish. She's a treasured member of the Metz team. Congratulations to you. From Osborne High School, Juana Batris, who is the head custodian. Ms. Batris is an essential part of Osborne High School. Her tenacity and work ethic help to provide a safe and clean environment for all at Osborne High School. Ms. Batris goes above and beyond making sure that everyone is taken care of, staff and visitors as well. One colleague stated, "I, for one, feel secure that Ms. Batris and the entire custodial staff will have everything ready for us to return to the building with the effectiveness that characterizes our custodial department." Thank you, Ms. Batris, for all you do. Congratulations. And from transportation, we have David Villa, who's a bus driver. David Villa, who has been driving for MCPS for the past two years, has found a new love, assisting special education teachers when he is free from other assigned duties. He loves working with SPED students, and when they all were 100% virtual, he went to the schools so he could assist. The students love the mask that he wears, and they also love the help he provided the teachers. Thank you, Mr. Villa, for brightening up the lives of students, even during these unprecedented times. And we have from Central Office Maintenance and Facilities, Orlando Pizarro Mascort, head custodian. Orlando Mascort has responded to several precautionary cleaning requests throughout the division. He is part of the COVID Response Team, or CRT, and continues to be a beacon of light during uncertain times. His leadership has made a difference, and the division is fortunate to be able to call upon his services and have him as a valued MCPS family member. Congratulations to all of our Pear Award winners tonight. Round of applause for each of you. Thank you all so much. I know everyone can't be seen, um, and normally, we would gather together to take a photo, but I did want you all to be able to see each of their faces on the screen. So thank you all so much. You're welcome to, um, jump off of the meeting at this time if you'd like to. There, there you go. I'll give him a second. Okay, Chairman Williams, uh, our next recognitions for tonight is School Board Appreciation Month. So each year, the Virginia School Boards Association designates February as School Board Appreciation Month. This year's theme, 115 Years of Providing Leadership Advocacy and Support, reflects the partnership the VSB has with local school boards as they serve their local communities on behalf of students in the Commonwealth, which is what you all do. Tonight, each of our schools are represented and will share information on why they are appreciative of the many ways our school board supports MCPS students and staff. So, we will begin tonight, sorry, Ms. Garza, make sure I got my list here ready for you. We will begin tonight with our first presentation, which will be Baldwin Elementary School, Ms. Laura Goldsung, who is the principal there, uh, will share her information with you now.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Seaberg, Dr. Newman, and members of the school board. My name is Laura Goldsung, and I am the principal of Baldwin Elementary School. Tonight, I want to highlight the work of Baldwin Elementary during the 2020-2021 school year in an effort to show how your support and encouragement has impacted the lives of and the education of our community. As I was preparing these remarks, it was evident that we can reflect on our work through three lenses: tradition, technology, and above all, teamwork. Next slide, please, Ms. Garza. Baldwin Elementary School has a long history with Manassas City Schools, and this year, we were thrilled to continue to participate in some of the traditional activities that make Baldwin Baldwin. We welcomed students and families to our virtual back-to-school night. While distance learning presented us with a whole new list of challenges and questions, our community still had some time-honored questions about teaching and learning that we needed to answer, and we all love meeting our new teacher. October at Baldwin Elementary means it is time for Bunanza, and this year, we turned the annual event into a drive-through supply distribution where students were provided more markers, crayons, papers, books, whiteboards, everything they needed to support learning at home. And finally, the Baldwin Holiday Sing-Along went virtual, thanks to the participation of all of our teachers and staff. Next slide, please. We could say that school year 2021 is made possible because of technology, but really, our access to computers, hotspots, document cameras, innovative platforms, that was made possible by the Manassas City School Board. By creating a school system that is student-centered and dedicated to teaching and learning, we were able to use technology to create and sustain authentic, productive relationships with our students and their families. Next slide. And lastly, the work of Baldwin Elementary is done together. At our core, we are a team dedicated to meeting the needs of our community. Whether it is online, or hybrid, or 100% in-person, all staff members are ready to do what it takes to meet that goal. From device distribution and orientation to delivering materials so that students have what they need, to the amazing front-office staff who are coordinating all of these efforts with a smile on their face and a positive attitude, teamwork is the glue that holds this organization together. And as our school board, you are the foundation of that team. You make this work possible. Next slide, please, Alba. Together, we serve an amazing community of learners. Thank you for your support, your trust, and your encouragement. We appreciate your leadership. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsung, and I want to echo everything that she's saying. Tonight is really about the many ways that our school board sets policy, helps approve our budget, all of the decisions that you have to make to, um, affect teaching and learning in our division. And this is the reason that our principals wanted to highlight some of the great things that are happening in their buildings, um, thanks to the work that you all do and the leadership that you provide. So thank you, um, Ms. Goldsung, for that. And we're going to move on to our next elementary school, Jenny Dean Elementary. Uh, we have Principal Kara Grasser, who is here tonight to share some information about her school.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. My name is Kara Grasser, and I am the principal at Jenny Dean Elementary School. On behalf of our students, teachers, and community, I want to thank you for your service to our school division. This year has challenged our leadership and decision-making. It's placed the role of school boards and school administration in the spotlight and forced us all to think outside the box. I'm not even sure there is a box anymore. Mostly, this year has challenged our definition of school. Our goal at Jenny Dean this year has been to continue to engage our students and families in learning every day. We've worked to continue to provide hands-on opportunities for our students through STEM projects, and we've adapted them to include their families. We've invited in virtual guest speakers to join in our classrooms and invited both our students and parents to continue to learn along with us. Most importantly, through your support and a culture of care, we've demonstrated that school is so much more than a place. Because I say the kids always say it better than I do, and to show you how far we've come with our technology skills this year, here's a short video of thanks.
We're checking on the sound for that real quickly.
Hi, my name's Sophie from Jenny Dean. Thank you to the school board for providing materials and opportunities for STEM programs. Here's a quick video of a booklet I made last fall. I have this turkey here. It's not exactly how I was supposed to make it. I just call it. More help than it already is. This pen. Yeah. Yep, and then this is my other activities from Mary's, so thank you.
Hi, friends. So today, I need a table that can balance. So this can hold like pencils, and this will hold brush racks, like evidence and skills. And this, uh, is a red brush, so it can balance. And I put these here on toes, just as the stands. Bye, friends.
So, hey, I need, I need two, and I use foil and straw. And the first one, um, I made like a little canoe, and I put it small. And the second one, I made like a little skinny book, little, and one. Thank you to all our school board members. You have had a very interesting and fun school year so far. We have learned a lot about ourselves and how we learn. We have learned a lot about our teachers, too. They have done a great job helping us learn on the computer. We are focused on being the best virtual doctors, doctors we can be. We know you put our learning and safety first in all of your decisions. And thank you for helping to make sure our learning is highlighted this year.
So showing that we are still learning with our technology. This last picture you're looking at, this is a two-and-a-half-year-old student in one of our preschool classes. His mother shared this picture with us two weeks ago and allowed us to share it with all of you. In his class, he was learning about the planets, and he completed a STEM project at home through distance learning, where he completed visual representations of the planets. His mom and his younger brother joined in in the fun as well. We've had so many struggles over this past year. This picture shows us that learning is still present, and so is joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Grasser. Um, I know that there's a little buffering that goes on with that, but I want our school board members to know that these videos are also in the board docs for you if you want to go back there and look at them later tonight or another time. I'm appreciative to you, um, for helping our students and everyone put this together. So thank you for sharing that information tonight. All right, our next group will be, um, Hayden Elementary, our Hayden Hawks, and our presenter will be Principal Karis Brooks from Hayden.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Newman, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seaberg, and our Manassas City School Board. I am delighted to share some of the highlights of our compelling school year. This school year started out with some plans, uh, a little uncertainty, some excitement, a little chaos, a few tears, and a lot of continued support and exceptional, exceptional dedication. Even with all of the struggles we've encountered this year, there are Even with all of the struggles we've encountered this year, there have been so many positive moments. We tried to capture all that we could with this video story of Hayden highlights from our 2020-2021 school year so far. I'm gonna let that play.
On behalf of our students, families, and staff of Hayden Elementary, Happy School Board Appreciation Month, and thank you for your support to our schools.
Wow, Ms. Brooks, thank you so much for sharing those exciting things that have been happening during virtual learning at Hayden. That looks great. I'm sure the students will be really excited about that furniture and those playground equipment. So thank you for sharing with us tonight. All right, next we have Mr. Andrew Wilson from Round Elementary School, representing the raccoons.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Newman, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair, Ms. Seberg, and members of our school board. I'm so appreciative to have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate you this evening and also express our appreciation. I'm excited to share really two forms of appreciation. One is coming from our staff members at Round, and one is coming from students. So I reach out to our staff, because sometimes it just feels good to know, you know, how you're thought of, how we, what we see, what we, how we would describe you and the wonderful work that you do and the leadership that helps guide our work each and every day. So what I said was, I just sent out a prompt, and I asked them to submit three adjectives, three descriptors that come to mind when they think of our Manassas City School Board, when they think of you. And the word cloud, or the wordle, as some say, is here in front of you. So I love these graphics. I think it really illustrates a powerful message. But you see some powerful words, like, you know, caring, supportive, appreciative. We appreciate how we feel appreciated by you. You know, you see the powerful words here that we hope resonate with you as coming from our staff. And if I had to make my best effort to kind of summarize all of these beautiful words, in one word, it would be family. And I know you know that, you know, we, Manassas City Public Schools, together take a lot of pride in that element, that aspect of community and family. All of which can't be defined. It's not all concrete. It's a feeling, and it's the feeling that working with you to make sure that we're giving our best to our students leaves us with. That's the feeling that working with you leaves us with. So we're so appreciative for you making us feel like family. What's behind every family is love. I'll go ahead and say it. So we appreciate that you show us love, and we hope that you feel that coming back your way in moments like this. And so, thank you. And the next thing I'll do is I'll transition to a little video, and I'd like to introduce our, two of our fantastic staff members and a few of our phenomenal students. Ms. Kathy Evans and Ms. Taylor Hawkins are our SGA sponsors. And as we transition over to the video, I hope the audio works out okay, but they've done a little acrostic where they, you know, make an effort to define what comes to mind when they think of our school board as well.
Thank you, everybody. The Jersey Round Elementary School Student Council Association officers are going to present a poem to show their appreciation for our school board. Our president is Sophia Weisel. Our vice president is Trinity Pearson. Our secretary is Abrusado. Our treasurer is Mackenzie Jackson. And our photographer is Chabi Legaro's boss. So we know.
S is for stands beside us. E is for turns for all of us. H is for helps us a lot. O is for overly caring. L is for optimistic message. L is for loves around the elementary school. E is for best school work of all. O is for on top of. A is for always keeping you safe. L is for really student. And D is for doing it together. Thanks for everything you do for Manassas City Schools.
So I hope with that you can see and feel how we at Round Elementary feel about you and the way you treat our students, staff, and the community as a whole, as a member of your family. That is not lost on us. We really appreciate it. Much love, respect, and appreciation goes to you. Thank you for all you do.
What a great presentation, Mr. Wilson. Thank you so much. And it was wonderful being able to see our students, especially in their leadership roles, participating tonight. So please thank them on our behalf for their presentation. So next we have from Baldwin, no, I'm sorry, from Weems Elementary, our Wildcats, Dr. Zella Jones is going to share with us.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairman Seberg, Dr. Newman, and school board members. My name is Dr. Jones. I'm the principal at Weems Elementary. Weems Elementary is delighted to take this moment to thank our school board members who lead and support our school division. As a school board member, you have given us strong leadership throughout challenges and celebrations, clarity through debates and discussion-making, and you have a sustained vision for our division. Your leadership has, through your leadership, you're grounded, and you make all your decisions with the well-being of the students at heart. We are fortunate to have each of you as school board members. I want to thank you for your leadership, your commitment, and just everything you do for our school and our community. We thank you for your vision from Manassas City Public Schools and for Weems. And we thank you for helping to improve our system to make it what it is today. You do so many little things for us, so please view the video to see the little things that are big at Weems Elementary.
Ms. Grasser, the Weems, what is it, screen sharing?
Okay, let me try this again. Can you see it now?
No, ma'am. We do have it. Just hold on just a moment. I'm sorry, Dr. Jones, we weren't able to open it earlier. I don't know why. It's just not attaching right now.
Technology's always iffy.
Thank you, it's there.
So, school board members, as you can see, Weems is proud to represent Manassas City Public Schools, and we once again want to thank you for all the little things and the big things you do for our school and our school division. Thank you.
Dr. Jones, before you go off, I know that the student's recording was a little low. Can you tell us who the student was? And because I think they would want to know a little bit about what she said.
Oh, yes. Our student is a fourth grade student. Her name is Sophia. And she just told you, once again, she was saying how great she loves being in Manassas City Public Schools, how she loves attending Weems, and she was thanking the school board members for all they do for the school system, both in this time of the pandemic and even before then. She just loves the school system, and both of her parents are Manassas City Public Schools employees. So thank you once again.
Awesome. Thank you so much. It takes a lot of courage for our students to do a lot of the leadership roles that they're doing in their schools. So we definitely appreciate all of our principals for nurturing that gift in each one of them. I'm very impressed with the leaves to spell your name. I don't know how they got those leaves to stay on the ground like that without blowing in the wind, but that was very crafty. Thank you so much.
I think you're muted, Mrs. Radford. There you go.
I'm sorry. Next we have Baldwin Intermediate School. Dr. Amanda Wilder Wagner, sorry.
Thank you so much, Ms. Radford. Good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. I am elated to be the principal of Baldwin Intermediate School, and Dr. Amanda Wagner. And on behalf of Baldwin Intermediate School, I want to thank you, this year more than ever, for your attention to the overall well, safety, and just care for our students and staff, along with and through meticulous planning continuously. It cannot be commended enough. Through your leadership, Baldwin Intermediate School has been able to not miss a beat. Our attendance since March 16th of last year has been roughly about 98 to 99%, even when attendance was not mandated. To me, that speaks to the community that has been created, and that is through your leadership. We've continued social activities, clubs, our monthly Husky huddles, and so much more. But I would like for you to hear it from some people far more important than I. This is a video put together, and I have to give all of the credit to our Baldwin Intermediate School SGA. This is all of their phenomenal work. And so with that, Ms. Grasser?
Y'all know that this has been crazy year. Going quarantine, we weren't from home, but we happen to be most of the insertion on the left side of the hospital. One of them has had two different questions. Here at least in school and college, there was successfully a pandemic, and that's been this long. This crazy year has helped us grow as students, and it's helped us to be more sociable, and more responsible for the school. Throughout this entire time, you, our school board members, have been there to support us, making better health and safety, while trying to ensure we all continue to have education. So as Chairman Sanford Williams, Vice Chair person Susan Super, who can marry our students and love them, we're so thankful to you to support our school and our school system. Our student books, the home, on board, we think you forget your school board at such a crazy time in the world. Help keep our school system very strong, and I'm here to support you. While we're in the SGA, we're trying to support you.
What's happening? I don't, it doesn't sound.
It's a s, school board thing, didn't it?
Yes, for the public schools.
I don't want to be seen.
Did you just do a period?
I would like to thank you all again so much for the opportunity, not only to be a part of this amazing community, but to lead and serve. Our theme this year has been opportunity through community, and I can say with absolute certainty and a heart full of gratitude that the excellence that's being achieved in the face of adversity would not be made possible. would not be made possible without this incredible community that you have afforded me this opportunity to lead and serve. So with that, I would like to thank you again so much for all that you do for us, and thank you again so much for all of the things that you've made possible.
Yes, thank you for muting. Dr. Wagner, thank you so much for sharing that information from Baldwin Intermediate School. We know that they worked really hard on that. Again, school board members, I hope you're able to go back and watch those in their entirety. I looked at them over the weekend and this evening, and they're just wonderful. I was so very proud to see all of the work that our students have done and working with our principals to share these exciting items with us tonight. So, thank you Baldwin Intermediate. And next, we move over to Mayfield Intermediate. Dr. Donnie Frishcorn is with us tonight, and he's going to share a few highlights about why they're happy and appreciative over at Mayfield.
Good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, and Manassas City School Board. Tonight, for school board appreciation, I'd like to share with you some of the recent upgrades that we've been able to accomplish at Mayfield Intermediate School. We've been looking for ways to improve and update our learning environments that are available to our students. In our recent focus, focus on our common spaces that are located in the four separate campuses within our school. These updates have been able to happen because of the resources that we have available for our students, staff, and community. And our school board is constantly there supporting our schools, making sure that our schools have the resources. I've seen our school board as some of the biggest cheerleaders for our students and staff. And because of your outstanding support, we're able to continually offer our students and staff some of the best facilities in Virginia. So, what I'm about to show you is these new learning spaces, and during this time in which space is a valuable and necessary asset, we've been able to add and improve. And these learning spaces, they're going to allow for a lot more collaboration and innovative learning. Our students, they've learned to be more independent during this time, and these spaces will give them some places to continue their learning. They'll create additional spaces for teachers to work with students. These spaces will also be utilized by our teachers to collaborate with one another and continue to grow professionally. And finally, these spaces also will bring to life the original design of Mayfield and the common spaces. One of the unique things was, as we were designing this, Mr. Jeff Apt was working in the school, and I was able to sort of brainstorm with him, and he talked about how they would travel to Ohio when they were building Mayfield, and this is what the vision was. So, I'm glad we were able to bring it together. So, if you want to click through some of the slides and the pictures we can see. These are, I'm excited for when our students return and what they're able to see. These learning spaces can accommodate up to a hundred students at a time, and they're just really beautiful. And again, I just can't believe that our school board is able to support this. This makes all the, this, I can't wait to see this. Students faces when they come in, even our teachers, a lot of our teachers have not been able to see this in person. And we're going to just continue to grow as a school. And so, with that, I just want to say thank you. As I'm finishing, in my third year here, I've been so proud to be part of Manassas City Public Schools, and that's because of the school board and the support you're able to give. And I'm able to go out there and be the biggest cheerleader for our school division because of the support we have from our school board. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Frishcorn. Yes, that building looks great, and we too anticipate the return of our students so that they can take advantage of all the great learning spaces that you all have created over there. I think I told Dr. Newman, I might do some of my work in that building, in the learning spaces. It looks awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you. And now, from Metz Middle School, we have, who is it? Oh, Mr. Dave Rupert is going to share some information about what's going on over at Metz. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, all members of the school board, new and experienced, whether this is your first year or it's your twentieth year. You know, we appreciate you this year because this year was absolutely a unique year. And you know, we want to, we want to thank you at Metz Middle School for the time and the effort. As, as I don't think a lot of people know how much time and the effort and the pressure that is on you as a school board member representing our community, you know. So, just really walking through the halls, Chairman Williams was here a few weeks to appreciate us as principals, and I wanted to share with him, and I did share with him, and want to reiterate that tonight, that I don't know how many times this school year, our Metz staff has shared with me how appreciative they are to work in Manassas City Public Schools. And one of the reasons, you know, that is, is because of our, is our school board. You're very resourceful, you're very authentic, you care about our students and your students first, and you care about our staff as well. So, just want to thank you for that, and thank you for always being there. We prepared a short video with a little bit of, we have some students, we have some staff members to share some of their appreciation. And one of the things that we're proud of this year is, you know, about mid-year, we were able to kind of get in and gain, and get our club started. And we have over eight, we have eight clubs, nine sponsors, and over a hundred and twenty-five students that are participating. You know, we talked about how much screen time. Will they come and join some more screen time? So, there's just one of our clubs, I said, there's no fun during COVID, and we said, we don't believe that's true. We have Ms. Asher, who's our club sponsor of the Fun Club. So, they get to work on some social and emotional types of things, to just have some fun and get around and talk. So, students are appreciative of that, they're going to share that, and have a few of our staff members with some heartfelt thanks as well. And I want to thank you all for being there for us. So, let's go ahead and get that started.
Hello, Manassas City Public School Board members. My name is Ms. Asher, and I teach at Metz Middle School. Today, I have something really special to share with you. The members of Fun Club have created a video to show our appreciation for you. I want to say thank you so much for your leadership, your dedication, your hard work, and basically your commitment to your students, your teachers, and your community around you. I really hope you enjoy this video and the message from members of Fun Club.
Thank you for the clothes and the cool tears.
Thank you school board for letting me have cameras so much, and I'm like, oh, because I gave you that, I'll perform.
Thank you school board for giving us the support of.
Thank you for all your support, and I know Fun Club is something that it's, it's not on a regular schedule, and it's fun to do something new and exciting every day.
Thank you for letting me be able to challenge so many other people and letting us keep learning this wonderful experience.
Thank you school board for everything you do.
I'd like to thank the school board, because without them, you wouldn't be able to go to school. And if we can't go to school, we won't be able to have a good education and get anyone else.
Thank you school board for all of your support. We appreciate your hard work.
On behalf of the Metz Middle School staff and myself, we'd like to extend a warm and well-deserved thanking to all of Manassas City Public School Board. You believed in us, you've supported us, you've been present when we needed you, and you've made the tough calls by examining the data and doing what's right and safe for our community, students, parents, and teachers. Again, thank you, and happy School Board Appreciation Week.
I want to thank you, the school board, for your support always, especially during this past year. Mr. Mary Agnes mentioned at multiple school board meetings that we are all in our first year because of this pandemic. You have received feedback from teachers in the community, done the research, and had the difficult conversations amongst yourselves. Even though your decisions will not always make everyone happy, you're doing what you feel is best for the students and staff of Manassas City Public Schools. You, the school board, mentioned that you appreciate the work of teachers, but you are also appreciated for your hard work as well.
Hello, my name is Ron DeGrau, and for over four decades with Manassas City Public Schools, I have had the opportunity to work with several schools in certain Manassas City Public Schools. Each year has been unique and different, but the 2020-2021 school year has been hard. You watched and encouraged as we embrace strength, double weaknesses, and turn challenges into victories. If you don't quit, you cannot fail. You supported our ideas as we tough learning beyond the walls of the classroom, discovering distant learning doesn't have to be a distance. Your devotion to our community and doing what is best for all students and every MCPS member is invaluable. Thank you for all of your support in a year unlike no other. It has made all the difference. Happy School Board Appreciation.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you.
So, just, yeah, just to wrap up, and again, I'm a very proud principal of Metz Middle School, and I know that my staff is proud to be a part of Manassas City, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Rupert. And I'm guessing that it's a good thing that we were virtual because I'm not sure City Hall would have accommodated a live Mustang in the building, but that was great seeing that. Thank you so much for including the staff and the students together to share your presentation. We appreciate all of you.
We'll try that another time.
Okay. And finally, we have our Osborne High School Chief Eagle himself, Mr. Mike Flugrath, and he's going to share some information with us about the great things that are going on over at Osborne.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. Thank you Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Ms. Seberg, school board members, Dr. Newman. I'm Mike Flugrath, the proud principal of Osborne High School, and I'm honored to be here tonight to show our appreciation for our school board. I did a straw poll of our, of our staff and students to get what they thought of when they hear "school board." What were the thoughts that came to their mind? And I grouped them into the top three responses. The first response was unwavering support. The school board has been supportive in good times and in difficult, challenging times, and as felt with every staff member in our building, they feel supported, they feel loved, they feel cared for. The second most popular answer was clear and transparent communication. I can tell you, it's easy, you make it easy to follow you because the communication is clear, it's very much open book, and we know what to do, and that goes both ways. The teachers and staff feel, and the students feel like you're also always going to listen. And it amazes me, the time that you take to listen to everybody's input is much appreciated and makes you very unique. The third, and the last one I'll say, is your ability to create a caring and inclusive culture that permeates all through our school at Osborne, and I think through Manassas City as we heard tonight. And most of that is, a lot of it is just you being there. I wish parents could see how often you're, I've yet to been at an Osborne event where there was at least one school board member there. It could be virtual, it could be in person, it could be looking at technology, it could be at a performance, but there's, you're there. And people notice that, staff knows that, the kids know that because you really do care. So, appreciate you being there. The questions you ask me, you all ask me the same questions, and it's really comes down to this. You say, Mike, what is best for kids? Every time, I don't care how you phrase it, but it basically comes down to the same thing. What is best for our kids? And you used the word "our," you know, that we're all in this. So, I can tell from the heart, and a great example of this care-inclusive culture comes to mind was last July, when we did our graduation, you know, a little under five hundred students there. You know, for five days in the heat outside, every graduate, all day long, had individual ceremony for five days, and every one, there's a school board member at every single graduate of Osborne High School. And to say that, I challenge any school board in the nation to say they did that, to personally be there for every student was just another example of your caring and inclusive culture. So, we appreciate you at Osborne, we do love you, and your love is felt here. I did want to do a shout out to my colleagues tonight with their great presentations and say, I'm excited about our future Eagles. I'm looking at these kids, and I'm like, I can't wait for them to come into Osborne. And I always say, one Osborne family, and that's, you know, inclusive of everybody. I can't wait to see them. So, thank you to my colleagues too. You did a great job tonight. Thank you, school board. We love you. We are one Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Flugrath, and I think he summarized it just great. Fabulous presentations from everyone. Again, we know that these are challenging times, and we have to do things in creative and new ways, but I appreciate each of you are rising up to the challenge and doing some great presentations about the wonderful things that are happening in your buildings. And as we said, this is School Board Appreciation Month. We're coming to the conclusion of the month, but we hope that you all know that we appreciate you every day of the week, every month of the year. Each of you will be receiving a certificate from VSB in recognition of your service and in honor of School Board Appreciation Month. So, thank you principals, and thank you to everyone else who participated on tonight to make our School Board Appreciation Month presentation what it was. At this time, I would like to remind you all that February fifteenth through the nineteenth was also designated as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And we have a fabulous school board clerk in Manassas City Public Schools in that of Ms. Alba Garza. We also have a deputy clerk of the school board, which is Ms. Lee Miller. And so, at this time, I'm going to hand it over to our chairman, who has some words to share about that. Thank you.
Now, I can unmute myself because I'm talking now. Touching myself on mute. Usually, what we do in person would be to thank the inimitable Ms. Garza and the awesome Mrs. Miller in person. We weren't able to do that this year, but I do know that Vice Chair Seberg was able to give some gifts from the school board to Ms. Garza and Mrs. Miller. We appreciate you greatly. I wasn't letting each school board member talk now, but because we have such a full agenda, I'll let folks make their comments at the end. But I do want to convey, Ms. Garza and Ms. Miller, we truly appreciate what you do for us. You keep us together, and it's been most challenging in this pandemic, but you all, you know, you rock it. You keep us going, keep us together, make sure, you know, things keep moving, and we can't afford to enough of the work that you do to help us and support us because we can't support our community without you supporting us. So, you are the foundation of what we do. So, thank you very much. We truly appreciate you. And again, during board member comments, I'm sure everyone else will convey their thanks and appreciation for both of you because you do incredible work. So, thank you. And with that, I think we will, well, first I have to thank Mrs. Radford. It's not easy, but all those awards, all those names, all those people trying to work with technology. You are on it, you're calm, you ask you to be quiet when it should be quiet, and it should be mute when it should be mute. So, thank you for doing that, and doing it in a nice, calm way, you know, which we appreciate. But it's not easy, and you make it look easy. So, thank you for doing this. You do it time and time again. You do it wonderfully. So, thank you, Mrs. Radford, for reading the words out and organizing our spotlights because you're, we appreciate that as well.
And thank you all for your patience and your time tonight.
Hey, no problem at all, no problem at all. It's only a gin, it's citizens' comments, and I believe we have a few, so I will turn that over to, I guess, Mrs. Garza and Mrs. Radford.
Yes, Mrs. Ref, that would be me. Okay, let's see, we have four citizens' comments for tonight, and I want to make sure that I get them all ready here for you. Okay. All right, here we go. Our first one is from Robert Ridgel. He says, I would like to speak regarding the considerations of the Manassas City School Board on return to school policies for the school district. My son attends Baldwin Elementary, and my spouse is a teacher at Jenny Dean Elementary. Given our family's interaction with the school district in two ways, this decision is critical to our family's needs. Generally, I understand the options to be a full return to relatively normal operating Generally, I understand the options to be a full return to relatively normal operating procedures, a hybrid approach with alternating classes in person and virtual, a continuation of full virtual instruction. I'm writing to convey our strong opposition to a hybrid approach. This methodology creates additional exposure risk for students and teachers with an apparently single goal of providing what is tantamount to part-time daycare two days a week. The split nature of instruction will result in wasted efficiency and resources between the two methods and additional expenses with maintaining the facilities while providing virtually no reduction in exposure potential, in fact, likely increasing it. Bear in mind that many students on asynchronous virtual days will be in the same daycare centers because their parents will not be able to get asynchronous daycare programs. Teachers will still be exposed to the same level, but with two class groups, contact tracing will be near impossible. We implore you to decide either on a continuation of the virtual, a full virtual instruction approach or a normal operating procedure. Hybrid is a waste and nothing but a ploy for political showmanship. In making the decision between the two viable options, also please take into consideration the timetable for widespread distribution of the vaccine. We have been in quarantine for almost 11 months with only a few more before the vaccine is more widely available. That 11 months will have been wasted for so many that will contact, contract the virus by a rush back to normal operations. Stay the course and continue to be a shining example of the success of virtual education and adaptability in these trying times. Sincerely, Robert Rigel. Our next commenter is Deiraj Jagadev. Members of the school board, I write to you as a resident, a parent with a student in the school system and as an employee of the Manassas City School System. Let me begin by thanking all of you for the hard work you have all been doing over the past year under very difficult and unprecedented circumstances. It is clear to me that the school board has the best interests of its students at heart. This is partly why I felt the need to reach out to you. As cases begin to trend downwards through the state, it is more important than ever that we not let our guard down and instead double down on precautions to combat the Nobel Coronavirus. My sense of urgency is partly informed by my medical background and by the current coincident, or the current incidence of COVID-19. At a time when the UK variant is doubling every 10 days in the United States, and he provided some references, and will likely be the dominant strain, and knowing that the far more tricky South African strain has already reached Virginia, we should take a long, hard look at the reality on the ground instead of rushing to open city schools. We have already had staff members in various schools exposed to COVID-19 and that situation may be further untenable if 10, 20, or 30% of the students make their way back to a classroom setting. Like a lot of parents, I too have seen some setbacks on the educational front that my special needs child has had to deal with. This in no way is a fault of the stellar elementary school staff where they are no doubt trying their best. We are all trying to make the best of a bad situation after all. My wife and I ultimately decided that as much as it could potentially benefit our son to be back at school in person, the relative, relative certainty of him or his grandparents not coming down sick with COVID-19 is far more important to us and that is why we will be keeping him home. This is particularly true in the aftermath of a potential super spreader event like the Super Bowl over the weekend, which was referenced. To a certain extent, I'm not even sure if the disruption of the tail end of this school year to move to a hybrid or in-person setting would benefit our students. We have already asked so much of our students and their parents. I believe the least worst of the terrible options before us is continuation of the school year in a virtual format. Governor Northam and his directives aside, I thank you for your time. Deiraj Jagadev. Our third commenter tonight is Carrie Davis. Good afternoon. I'm writing to you requesting that parents be allowed to attend their children's outdoor games. This was approved by VHSL at 30% spectator capacity already. It is easy to allow two parents per player. It can be marked off at the ticket stand and early checked with the team rosters. Temperature and mask can be required as well as social distancing. It's very easy to do. For some of these kids, it's their very last chance to ever play. Parents deserve to be there. Please consider allowing parents to attend. Also, can you please add this to your discussion at tonight's meeting? Carrie Davis. And our final commenter tonight is Diana Ortega. Good afternoon. My name is Diana Ortega. I have a child that attends Hayden Elementary. My statement today is regarding Agenda Item B, Return to Learn. First, I appreciate the board's careful consideration in making decisions that affect students, teachers, staff, and the community. While the board has taken into consideration that MCPS staff have been given the opportunity to be vaccinated, I would like the board to consider whether the community has had the same opportunity. Many parents, guardians in our community are essential workers who may or may not have an employer who offers information for vaccination and who may or may not implement safety measures. We also know that language is a barrier for many and that the VDH made mistakes with information posted on their website, causing confusion. She provided the link for that. I've heard in my own community, in Brentwood Apartments, the confusion there is about the vaccine. Last weekend at Walgreens, I translated for someone who thought that they could receive a vaccine there. Unfortunately, this was not the case. According to information found on the VDH website, there are many essential workers that have yet to have access to the vaccine. My mother is an essential worker who has worked throughout the pandemic and has not had access to the vaccine yet. There have been several COVID cases at her job and getting tested has been challenging. Local testing sites have long waits and run out of tests quickly. I ask that you please consider delaying the return to learn until we have information on whether those in the MCPS community have had access to vaccination so that we do not spread COVID to those already most vulnerable in our community. Thank you, Diana Ortega. That concludes our citizens' comments for tonight. Chairman Williams.
Very much, Mrs. Radford. I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is Board Committee Comments. Let me change my screen so I can see everybody. There we go. All right, so I will start with the Academics Committee. Mrs. Seberg, or Vice Chair Seberg, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Academic Committee met on February 17th and in that meeting, we did discuss, we got an update on the Dual Language Immersion Program at Hayden Elementary. It started several years ago and now the first cohort is their fourth graders and they're going to be moving on to Mayfield. And so we got to look at what that's going to look like for them. That was really great. We also did some talking with the Math Innovations Team. We have some really awesome programming going on with some of our teachers. They started this program and they've been implementing it. And Mr. Di Maria and Mrs. Stevens and myself, we were all able to sit in on some of these lessons and they were very interesting, really engaged with their students. And we hope that it spreads out through more of our math teachers. And we did talk about the calendar. Usually we start our academic calendar and we send out surveys and things like that. We survey the staff, we survey the families. But we are going to postpone that to the fall just because of everything going on and so many unknowns. So we can look forward to that in the fall. And that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Seberg. The Policy Committee, Ms. Stevens.
Nothing this time.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Mr. Di Maria, Education Support or Finance?
Finance, we're not having finance meetings right now because we're having budget meetings right now. So I think we have one next week and then the week after. And so those will be our Finance Committee meetings and Education Support. We should have a meeting in the next week or so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Di Maria. Appreciate it. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Williams.
I report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. So may I have a motion for that, please?
Sir, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mrs. Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as presented. May I have a roll call vote on that motion, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes. Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Seberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
And Mrs. Brooks?
Brooks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The Consent Agenda Motion passes 7-0. Next on the agenda, we move to the Discussion Agenda, New Business, Equity and Education Proclamation. And I'm not sure if y'all can see it up on the screen. But thank you, Mrs. Garza. I appreciate that. I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, but the School Board of the City of Manassas is recognizing the month of March 2021, as is the VSBA, the Virginia School Boards Association, as Equity and Education Month. We want to state, as VSBA does, that we support educational equity, best practices, and programming opportunities for all students. And the proclamation is listed there. It's also on our website if you want to check it out. With that, may I have a motion for the Proclamation for Equity in Education, please?
Sir, I make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the Equity in Education Proclamation.
Motion by Mrs. Williams and I think Vice Chair Seberg got it first. Was that you? I couldn't see the picture. Vice Chair Seberg, second. Was that you or Miss Stevens?
I thought it was Miss Stevens.
Okay.
I think it was me.
That's what I give. Okay, your face was covered up. So motion by Mrs. Williams, second by Mrs. Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the Equity in Education Proclamation. Mrs. Garza, may I have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Yes. Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Seberg?
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
And Mrs. Brooks?
And Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it 7-0 and the Equity Education Proclamation passes. Next on the agenda, Old Business. And I will turn it over to Dr. Sanders.
Good evening. And, Ms. Garza, can I go ahead and share? Let's see here. I think we were trying at the same time, Ms. Garza.
You should be able to share now.
Yes. Very good. So, good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, our team wants to first start by echoing our schools and send our appreciation for your support, your leadership, and your commitment to our students, to the school board. So thank you. And we will continue on and share our current status for our return to learn planning. We begin this evening by sharing several recent announcements and guidance documents that have been released at the state level regarding reopening of schools. On January 14th, Dr. James Lane, State Superintendent for Public Instruction, and Dr. Norman Oliver, State Health Commissioner, released interim guidance for reopening pre-K through 12, updating the guidance provided in July. On February 5th, 2021, Governor Northam called on school divisions to safely return students to classrooms statewide. He set an expectation that schools provide in-person options by March 15th in accordance with health guidance and that schools offer summer learning opportunities. On February 12th, 2021, the CDC issued updated guidance for schools. As I've said many times, tonight I continue to serve as your virtual meeting speaker. But please know the work that is represented here is taking place in every classroom, in every department, in every area across our school division. As you see, my colleagues, Mr. Lyon, Dr. Cramp, Dr. Brenn, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Sansone, Mr. Barrett, Ms. Wingfield and Ms. Radford are here with us this evening. They're all prepared to answer any questions and provide any clarification. Our agenda for tonight includes current community data, return to in-person learning, instruction and assessment, student services, administrative and support services, human resources, and communication. We consider, continue to consider several key factors that impact future in-person phases. The first is metrics. These include our metrics of local burden and CDC school indicators, including our ability to follow all recommended mitigation strategies. The second is our family return to learn survey data that principals are currently using for planning. The third, our individual programs or student needs. The fourth is technology needs and availability. And finally, staffing and opportunities for availability of vaccines for all staff members. The Virginia Department of Health publishes the Weekly Transmission Extend Dashboard. This dashboard is intended to help inform state and local officials about the effects of COVID-19 on each region to help them decide whether to act on additional mitigation measures for individual communities. This graphic shows, as of the weekend in February 13th, 2021, the current status of COVID-19 in Northern Virginia is at substantial activity and considered high burden and decreasing. The burden and trend scores for the region are both calculated each Monday as an average of composite and trend scores from the previous week. The composite burden score for Northern Virginia was 19.5 high burden and the trend score was 1.9 and considered decreasing. The CDC has published a set of indicators for dynamic school decision-making. These indicators and thresholds help communities better understand the risk of introduction and transmission of COVID-19. These metrics are the core indicators for Manassas City as of February 23rd, 2021. The total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last 14 days from Manassas City is currently in the highest risk category. The percentage of RT PCR tests that are positive during the last 14 days remains in the highest risk category. Secondary indicators for Manassas City today, February 23rd, 2021, are in the lowest risk category for the percent change in new cases per 100,000 population during the last seven days compared with the previous seven days. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied is in the lowest risk category. And the percentage of hospital beds in the region that are occupied by patients with COVID is in the lower risk category. As mentioned previously, VDOE has released updated guidance for school reopening. Recent VDOE guidance suggests that by considering school, community, transmission, and mitigation school impact levels, schools can use this table to identify when offering in-person instruction may be reasonable to consider, how to transition learning as a community transmission levels change, and how to prioritize certain groups of students. This is intended to be a guide and schools may choose to take more or less restrictive approaches than what is suggested in this table. This slide provides the previously presented timeline for return to in-person instruction. Reflected in this timeline are the technology installation windows, teacher preparation days, and asynchronous learning days for students. Another reminder that as in-person instruction begins, school start and end times, as well as times for classes during the day, will change. We begin with select CTE programs starting March 8th on Mondays only. Sorry, March 15th on Mondays only. These in-person, these in-person only Mondays will be for our programs with hands-on hours requirements. Students will have the option to attend. Students will have the option to attend in-person on Mondays, and transportation will be provided. These teachers will not need time to prep in their rooms prior to starting, as they have already been teaching from school and will be preparing for concurrent teaching on Mondays. The timeline continues with our school-dependent learners. Teacher prep days will be on March fifteenth and sixteenth, and students will begin on Wednesday, March seventeenth. Pre-K through four teachers return for prep days on March fifteenth through nineteenth, and students start in-person on Tuesday, March twenty-third. This represents the previously shared return dates for our intermediate, middle, and high school students. For grades five through twelve, teachers return for prep days on March twenty-second through twenty-six. The prep days are followed by spring break, therefore our students start in-person following break on Tuesday, April sixth. At that time, our select CTE programs will continue with Monday instruction. As shared in previous presentations, in the hybrid model with additional video streaming technology, live instruction continues four days a week, but may happen in-person via Zoom or a combination of the two. In this model, teachers may have students in the classroom and others at home, and he or she will be teaching the two groups of students at the same time. Schools are planning schedules with the data collected from the parent survey that closed on December seventh, twenty twenty. Families who selected in-person learning will attend school on either Tuesdays and Thursdays, or Wednesdays and Fridays. Individual student schedules and teacher changes are possible, but should be minimal. There may be some instances where students report to school, but their teacher is teaching from home via Zoom. In this case, a classroom facilitator will be assigned to manage the classroom and supervise the students. A reminder that asynchronous instruction is non-life teaching and can include recorded lessons, videos from other sources, work time for assignments, or other activities. In-person activities continue to be considered and planned. Driver's education is a required course for all students. The state of Virginia does now allow behind-the-wheel instruction to occur using appropriate mitigation strategies. Osborne High School students would benefit from the opportunity for limited behind-the-wheel instruction with available staff. We've begun season two for athletics. This season encompasses the fall sports of sideline cheer, football, volleyball, cross-country, field hockey, and golf. Under current guidance, up to twenty-five spectators are allowed for indoor sports, and up to two hundred and fifty spectators are allowed for outdoor sports. Tickets will be distributed, and only the home team is allowed to have spectators. Finally, Osborne High School is planning for the class of twenty twenty-one senior celebrations. At this time, we are pleased to announce that the senior drive-through is proposed for May twenty-fifth at seven PM in the Osborne High School bus loop, and graduation is proposed for June first through fourth at Osborne. Both events will occur in a similar manner as they did last year. MCPS continues to administer the federally and state-required language proficiency access test to all English learners in grades K through twelve. Most schools have started testing. Currently, we have tested six hundred and forty-four students, and an additional one thousand five hundred and forty-seven students are scheduled to test. Eighty parents have refused to allow their child to take the test. The Virginia Board of Education established the Standards of Learning, the SOL, as a minimum expectation for what students learn in a course of study. Virginia's Accountability Plan requires public school divisions to administer SOL assessments in specific subject areas and grade levels each year as part of school accreditation and to meet federal testing requirements. The U.S. Department of Education notified states it is still requiring public schools to administer assessments in reading, math, and science this school year. Therefore, the Virginia Department of Education is requiring all Virginia public school divisions to administer SOL tests to students. VDOE requires students to take SOL tests under assessment conditions, which means they must take the SOL tests at school under the supervision of school personnel. Our schools are working to finalize spring SOL non-writing test schedules. Students in grades three through eight will take the grade-level SOL in reading and math. The science SOL test will be administered in grade five and eight. Schools will administer SOL tests mid-April through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Each school will notify parents and students of specific test dates. Expedited retakes for students in grades three through eight will not be offered this school year. Manassas City Public Schools will utilize the locally-developed alternative assessment in lieu of administering the Grade Four Virginia Studies SOL test, Grade Eight Civics and Economics SOL test, and the Grade Eight Writing SOL test. VDOE offered this flexibility to school divisions to help mitigate concerns about COVID and SOL testing. Students who are attending school in person will be tested on the days they attend school. Most students who are distance or virtual learners will be scheduled to take the SOL tests at school on Mondays and will receive communication from the school regarding specific dates and times. Virginia does not allow parents to opt their children out of SOL testing, but parents have the right to refuse testing. If a parent is not comfortable with sending their child into school for SOL testing because of COVID, the parent may refuse to allow their child to take the SOL test. Refusal to test will not impact a student's course grade or grade promotion and will not be reflected on the student's SOL school report as a refusal and will be reflected on the student's SOL score report as a refusal. At the high school, end-of-course or end-of-course SOL tests are required for federal and state accountability and to satisfy graduation requirements. When a high school student passes an end-of-course SOL test, it is referred to as a verified credit. Since verified credits are required for graduation, high school students must take the test if they are currently enrolled in an SOL-tested course and need to earn the verified credit for graduation. Again, parents have the right to refuse to allow their child to take the SOL test. If a parent refuses to allow their child to come into school and take an end-of-course SOL test, the child may take the test during a later administration window. Administration windows occur during summer, fall, and spring each school year. Please note, Osborne High School will be administering the end-of-course SOL writing test between March sixteenth and nineteenth. Students have already been notified, and transportation will be provided. Virginia Department of Education has given flexibility to school divisions to locally award verified credits in lieu of passing an end-of-course SOL test, but students must meet eligibility requirements. On this slide, you can see the eligibility requirements for seniors. Please note, locally awarded verified credits are also available to high school students enrolled in end-of-course SOL-tested courses. However, they will need to have at least one test attempt and a qualifying score to be eligible for the locally verified credit. A link to the eligibility requirements is provided here. As we consider transition into a hybrid model, we know that our students will continue to need our support. Counselors will continue to support social, emotional learning, or SEL, mental health, and academic advising through multiple methods, including recorded lessons, in-person support in the hybrid model, live support through video conferencing, and dedicated office hours. Specific supports include continuation of at least one SEL lesson to all students weekly, school psychologists and division social worker providing supports as needed, continued sharing of community resources and supports to students and families. In the coming weeks, the Student Services Team plans to purchase Cameron's collection as well as other custom SEL collections. Each of these collections features approximately fifty age-appropriate, evidence-based ebooks to help families and students of all ages better understand mental health. For example, elementary students can learn how to manage emotions and improve teamwork, while high school students can discover strategies for handling stress and anxiety in healthy ways. In some cases, in our current learning environment and in our transition to a hybrid model, students may require us to provide more intensive services to them. In these situations, we offer Tier Two and Tier Three services to address specific needs. Tier Two supports include small group instruction with the counselors and potentially referrals to additional community-based supports. Tier Three supports include small group instruction with a counselor and/or psychologist and additional individual support. Tier Three supports may also include a referral for additional community-based services. Our Support Services Team continues to prepare for our return to learning. These next two slides provide a summary of the facility improvements happening to support necessary mitigation and promoting a healthy environment. All ventilation systems were inspected and adjusted to maximize the outside air intake, consistent with the recommendations of the CDC. Space conditions are constantly monitored for comfort and humidity. Systems are adjusted based on occupancy and demand. All air filters were replaced before buildings were occupied. The frequency of change is as follows. All air handling units biannual, and all interior units are quarterly. All HVAC air filters have been upgraded and will be changed again prior to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. A HEPA, High Efficiency Particulate Air Filter, unit has been installed in all isolation rooms the areas where potentially six students wait for transport to go home. A portable UV-C air and surface unit has been installed in the school nurse area. This equipment can be moved as needed to respond to any potential COVID mitigation area. One hundred additional, one hundred additional air cleaning consoles will be purchased and placed strategically throughout each school to add additional layers of support for clean air throughout the building. Prior to the pandemic, bipolar ionization equipment was installed in the mechanical systems at Osborne, Metz, Mayfield, and Baldwin. This equipment was part of the Energy Performance Upgrade Initiative completed two years ago. This technology is designed to manipulate the particles in the air, resulting in a healthier space. Mr. Hawkins, the Executive Director of Finance and Operations, has requested that every mechanical system that can accept this technology be included. So, we are actively working with vendors to receive proposals to install it at all schools where the technology is not currently available. Electrostatic sprayers have been issued to every building and provide the capability to disinfect spaces effectively and quickly. A COVID response team has been formed and has received additional training consisting of custodians from throughout the division to provide a response resource as needed. The CDC has recommended disabling all water fountains. Therefore, filtered drinking water console stations have been installed division-wide. All consoles were tested for lead, consistent with water guidelines established by the VDH Office of Drinking Water. All samples were returned with no areas of concern reported. Hand sanitizer stations have been strategically located in all schools, division-wide. Individual classroom containers of sanitizer, one thousand one-gallon containers, will be placed prior to the return to school. Plexiglass panels were installed in every school main office, reader desk, and in-between-hand sinks at restrooms that the public has access. Additional Plexiglass panels, about four hundred total, will be installed in principal-identified classrooms where close contact for instruction is necessary. Face masks and face shields have been issued to all staff, and each school was provided with five washable face masks for students. Human Resources has posted the hybrid substitute position in anticipation of students returning to the classroom. Current substitutes have been surveyed to determine their desire to receive training in the hybrid model. Applicant and current substitutes who elect to work in the hybrid model will receive training to support virtual teaching and in-person teaching. The classroom facilitator posting remains active, and we encourage anyone who is interested to apply. Division employees continue to have access to resources to help them through the COVID pandemic. The Employee Assistance Program, EAP, is available to employees whether or not they have health insurance with the division. Additional resources are located on the Internet in the Benefits Office section. Resources here include information about physical health, including information from the Mayo Clinic, emotional health, working from home, families and parenting, and financial tips. And finally, tonight, our Communications Office will assist schools and departments in providing updates regarding topics such as transportation, scheduling, safety procedures, and other important information in line with the board's actions taken tonight. If the board approves the return dates for students attending in-person, information regarding which days of the week students will have been assigned to attend will be shared soon. This concludes our return to learn update for this evening, and we are here to answer any questions.
Dr. Sanders, excellent presentation, and thanks again, like I say every time, to the staff. You all do incredible work, and we appreciate it. We're going to be voting on some of these items going forward. Before we get to that, I would like to give the board members an opportunity to ask any questions they have. So, before we move on to the action agenda, are there any questions about the presentation? I'm asking Mrs. Stevens first, and Mrs. Stevens?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, the Return to Learn Survey was closed December seventh. Have there been any updates to it, any changes, parent changing what their decision is? Because they knew we had a percentage that did not reply. So, we were making the assumption about where those students would be placed going into hybrid. So, do we have updates on it, or are we still going with those exact numbers from December seventh?
So, I'll go ahead and answer a couple of things, and then if I saw Dr. Newman unmute, so if he wants to add anything, he can certainly. So, I know that school principals have been fielding conversations with families over the last couple of weeks and have made any adjustments that families have requested in their data. And that's the, those are the updates that are taking place at the moment.
Um.
Dr. Sanders took care of it.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Newman.
No, she answered it.
Okay. I mean, is it, are we expecting a significant change or a negligible change in the number of students opting to go one way or the other?
The list that we have provided in Power School that has not been released yet is of the worst-case scenario. And in that worst-case scenario, none of our classes, besides some of the PE classes that would be in a gym in a larger space, are over thirteen, which we would be able to fit in a six, meeting the six-feet guidelines set by the CDC.
Okay, so that would be, when you say thirteen, you're talking thirteen students per classroom, per?
And that's not in every classroom, but the highest would be thirteen.
Okay, so up to thirteen.
Correct.
Okay, and yeah, and I don't know if you can answer that, this question or not. Is that going to be at the lower grades or at the upper grades, do you think? Do we see higher numbers, lower versus upper? I know you had shared numbers that you had, you shared them, I think, maybe two minutes ago. But I'm just curious, in worst-case scenario, where the higher numbers are.
There were three or four classrooms that I worked with, Mr. Fluagraf about at the high school. There were maybe one or two, Mr. Hawkins at Metz. And that may have been one or two at Mayfield, the elementaries. I don't remember any being at the thirteen mark. There may be some that were at ten.
Okay.
But that's just off the top of my head.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I didn't know if you would have that specific, you know, information. Um, and talking about staffing, and when we talk about facilitators, facilitators are school employees who will be in the building with students whose teachers are teaching virtually, correct?
Correct.
Do we know, and I'm trying to figure out how to best ask this question, because it's different at the lower grades than it is at the upper grades, because the upper grades, we have sections of classes, and then at the lower grades, we have actual classes. So, do you know approximately how many classes or sections we'll be needing facilitators for? Is that a question that can be answered?
I can give you the worst-case scenario, and it was thirty-five division-wide. And that could change. We do have some individuals that are going back to their physicians to determine if the ADA requirement is still needed. So worst case right now is 35. And I don't want to go into each individual school, but I can just tell you that each school has at least one with the, with our largest school sitting right now at 11. But I can tell you that that school has fulfilled their classroom facilitator amount at this point, unless there's something that changes coming up.
Right, um, and then continue on the staffing question. How are we in the area of substitutes? You know, and I'm going to be very transparent when I ask this question. I'm a teacher in Prince William County and the substitute shortage in some schools is, in my opinion, horrific. They are not able to get any subs. So in some of these schools, you've got plans where teachers are going to be using their planning time to cover other classes or classes will be combined when there aren't any subs. So how are we standing in the area of subs for when we have teachers who are going to be out of that building? Because it's going to happen, especially if we have exposure situations where teachers have to quarantine. So how are we in that?
Well, the first thing we have discussed is possibly continuing with our procedure of not getting a sub for the first three days. If a teacher is out and that classes will go into asynchronous work. That is one idea that we're using to minimize the need for subs. Manassas City is no different than any other school division when it comes to substitutes. And that is, we always could use more and that's, that was even before we entered the COVID world. So that hasn't changed. If we have to use our own staff, we have, thanks to the board, we will be able to give them some financial benefit for doing it. But, you know, we're going to continue. I know Ms. Wingfield and her staff have been working tirelessly trying to increase our pool. But, you know, with any school division, you'd never have enough subs. We will continue to, to push forward on that.
Okay, um, I'm just, I'm looking through. Dr. Saunders, you had mentioned, and you may have mentioned this in prior meetings and I don't know why it slipped me. But you, and forgive me if I'm wrong and correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned in the return to building plan, school start and end times might change and class times might change. Can you share if, if that is what you said, I, like I said, I couldn't be wrong because I was taking notes. And so I was thinking about what I was writing as I was listening to you. Um, can you share further information on that with us?
Sure, so when it's, when I say that it's changing, it's actually going back to a traditional bell schedule. Right now, we are on a virtual or distance learning bell schedule, which our times are different throughout the day than when a student would be attending in person. And once students would begin attending in person, the school's start and end times would have to return to the normal times and class periods or times that students would have their reading block or their language arts block or their first period or their fourth period, all of that sort of reverts back to
Okay.
the way it normally is. So we would, when that group of students comes in, we would have to be prepared to address that so that teachers could teach both those students in school and those students that are virtual.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a new, new schedule, it's new old schedule.
Correct.
New old bus times as opposed to brand new that everybody's got to learn something additional. And I'm sorry, I've got so many questions, but can you share specifics on how things like emergency drills, like fire lockdown tornado drills are going to be handled? Because they know we still have to conduct them. And because we've been virtual, typically the first month of school, we have to have a fire drill every week. Will that have to be done every week when hybrid starts or will it just be the monthly? And how are we going to work this out to keep students socially distanced? Because I've been, I've been in a high school and there's a fire drill and it's like the doors open and everybody streams out in this big giant wave. So I'm trying to envision what that would look like in a socially distanced world.
So Ms. Stevens first, I want to say that these drills have not stopped, even though we have been in the virtual world. So that, that first month of one a week is already over with.
Okay, good.
So we press back to the normal series of drills. Our principals are very talented and creative and they are working on plans that fit the needs of their individual schools. So Dr. Saunders, I don't know if you or Dr. Brent have anything to add to that.
Uh, no, Dr. Newman, you shared exactly what, what I was going to share.
Um. I think for right now, those were, actually, so if we go back to the slide, and I don't remember what number slide it was, it was back with the COVID metrics. And it was the CDC table that's got how, where we should be as far as who we're offering instruction to. And I cannot remember the slide number it is and I'm terribly sorry. I want to say it's around nine or 10. That one right there. Where are we? Because last time we met, we were in that top right-hand corner of highest priority learners in person ad group as capacity allows. Are we still in that same block?
Well, Ms. Stevens, I can tell you this, as far as this is concerned, you have to take your two of those top columns that are the core indicators, which put you in that, which put us in the highest, but you also have to look at your ability to incorporate mitigating strategies. And if you feel that you can put yourself in a green or a yellow area, you could move to another area. I will also tell you this, this is just one piece of guidance that we received earlier today. I was able to sit on the call, our weekly call with our state superintendent. We were on the phone with three pediatric doctors. And they shared guidance that is a little, it's a little different than this. So, and they were saying that we should be in a place where everyone should be able to return to school in some form with the proper mitigating strategies being implemented. So this is just one document that we could use. We shared every, every meeting because we want to be transparent with what is out there that we receive from, whether it's the CDC, whether it's the Virginia Department of Health, whether it's from the DOE. And according to this document, if you look at our core indicators plus our mitigating ability, we would have to determine if we were in the higher or the highest.
Um, now, in, in, in the phone call with state superintendent, and I don't know if it's been discussed at all, but we have spring break right around the corner and we know that after winter break, we saw a spike. Is there a concern that that could happen again? Or has that been voiced at all?
I have received several emails, just like the board, that has discussed the, the, the point of spring break. Spring break will be no different than, than summer break when trying to come back in August, when I look at that argument. So yes, there's a concern, it's going to be a concern after every break.
Okay, but nothing from the, and I, my question is from the experts. Um, because I'm sure you hear from them on a very regular basis and they're trying to keep you updated. So nothing new, no, because like before winter break, there was a lot of discussion of concerns. But there's not really that same discussion taking place now.
I can tell you that I've, I've been in these meetings now either once every week or once every other week with the DOE. And he brings on our health experts and there have been no talk about a rush or a spike from spring break the way it was discussed over winter break. That discussion has not happened.
Okay, all right, well, I think those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Other board members? Um, Mr. Damarion and Mrs. Williams.
Robin, if you'd been a little faster, you could have come before me and you might have covered my questions. Lisa, I love you going first. I got a lot of crossouts here that I don't have to ask. The first thing I have to say as, you know, obligatory for me is that shame on the federal government for making us do these SOLs. That they, they, they should feel very guilty about making our students and our teachers go through that. I'll leave that at that. Um, I have a question about our survey we had. And once, once, if we go back, once we go back, can a parent change their mind and revert back to virtual or start sending their, their child in? I believe they can. I hope they can. Is that the case?
That is the case.
That is the case.
Thank you. Um, and that was all I had except for the drive-through on May 25th. Uh, Mr. Flugrath is still on. That's my anniversary. You might want to change that to the 26th. So besides that, we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The date is duly noted. Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Damarion, your anniversary can wait. Um, I have one question. My concerns start to pivot to graduation. Um, 80 parents refuse to take SOLs. Do, do you know about how many parents have refused SOLs are at the high school level for the, the verified credits that they need?
I can take this now, Ms. Williams. Those 80 that refused testing were for the access test, not the SOL test.
Oh, okay, okay, then one more.
And.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just, and then to answer your second part, with the spring testing, it's too far away yet to know any refusals for that testing. And for writing, at this point in time, we've had, I believe, 13 refusals for the spring writing and of course, writing tests at the high school at, to date.
Um, so one more question about the verified credits. The little bit of leeway that they're giving for some, too, if you take the class, pass test and you don't pass SOL at that 400 mark, but you can, you, you could still get that verified credit if you, if your scores are a little bit lower. Um, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly because I may not. Um, if a student cannot pass an SOL that they have to have for graduation, they can, yes or no? If there's, if they score a certain amount on their PSAT or SAT in that subject, that can also give them a verified credit. Is that correct or am I understanding that wrong?
No, there are substitute tests that qualify for the reading and the writing and I believe the math. You can, if your SAT score is, is within the qualifying range and there's some other tests. We use the work keys also for SOL reading and writing. And with the local verified credit, the state is only requiring one attempt. And if the attempt is within 350 to 399 range, they, and they pass the class, they can be considered for locally awarded verified credit.
Okay, and one reason I'm asking these questions because I don't know that everybody knows these options are available. So that's fantastic. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Other board members with questions or comments? Um, Ms. Vice Chair Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question that came in through an email today and I just want to make sure that it's answered publicly. So if other staff is listening, that they will know. But in the presentation, it says we're getting more plexiglass barriers. If a staff member feels that they need that in their classroom to protect themselves, what is the process for going about getting that installed?
So, Ms. Seber, they need to be contacting their principal. Their principal will let me know. Okay, so we, we've ordered a bunch of them throughout. We're going to get even more. We ordered more today regarding in the library areas. So if there's a true need, they need to request to their principal and he or she will let me know and we will order the supply.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Seber. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hollinsworth.
I was a little reluctant to speak. I don't want to bring the party down. I just want to throw my two cents in. The presentations are outstanding and I, I appreciate everyone with the logistics, the planning, the custodians and, you know, visit the schools, I've seen the hard at work preparing for return to learn. The one issue that concerns me is this new variant. You know, to know what you don't know. Uh, today, we, we commemorate 500,000 lives lost to, to COVID-19. And by next month, a new variant will be the dominant strand. And the question is, what do we know? What do we don't know? We know that it, it spreads faster. We know that it's deadlier. And what does that mean? I mean, how? Does it linger in the air longer? Does it stick to your clothes longer? This is an invisible beast that we have to defeat no matter how hard we play. And so my concern is for my child, I wouldn't send her out and risk her on something that I don't know. On some things that I don't know, I can't control. Uh, we've done an outstanding job in controlling the things that we can't as far as putting up the barriers and so forth and all. Spent a lot of money on some hand sanitizer. It looks great. Everything we're prepared. I understand, I appreciate it. Um, it's just that invisible monster, that, that new strand, that new variant out there that we don't know what it is and what it does. Now, I appreciate the fact that the vaccines are working well against that new strand, but everyone hasn't been vaccinated. And when you talk about everyone, we're talking about the teacher's household, their spouses, their children. We're talking about the students that come to class when they transport back home. I know for, just a light story, last year, there was a student who had a certain situation where his mother was very ill. And I'm just thinking, if a student like him went home with that virus, he would have lost the only parent he had. I mean, in her physical state, that's how, I mean, she was pretty bad at all. So I'm thinking, I know a lot of, a lot of parents, and I guess I'm speaking to the community now, but I know a lot of parents don't want to put their children in harm's way. Uh. I know a lot of kids are struggling. I have three kids myself that homeschool here in the house. Uh, one didn't do that well. One did amazing. You know, everyone's different. Um, one suffered some mental health things that we had to deal with. You know, these, these are real issues. And we overcame all that. We overcame it all and we're here and we're ready to go whatever direction the school board decides. But the fact that, um, you know, a lot of people are impatient, it's being political side, political, I can't get it out. Uh, you know, I don't want to get into politics and I don't want to get into anything that I'm not an expert in. Uh, but what I do know is if we're, we're tired, we've been doing, we've been quarantined for 11 months and, uh, we just have a little further to go. Are we going to learn as a community to live with this? Are we going to act as a community to defeat this is my question. Um, so that's one of my questions as far as the logistics and the planning goes as far as return to learn. Because those are things that Dr. Newman and his staff can't control. He's on every, he's dotted all his i's, crossed his t's. Everyone's done their thing, but that variant that's out there of what we don't know is my greatest concern. I just wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collinsworth. Appreciate that. And I guess since everyone else um had a chance to chime in before we move on, um, I was asking Mrs. Brooks, do you have anything to add now or do you want to wait till the motion?
Um. I just know that I want everyone, I want to express to everyone that this is a difficult decision for all of us. Um, we want to do what is best for everyone. We want to take all the data. And process it and make sure we make the best choices. Um. In the end, we can only do what our, what our heart tells us, what our brain tells us. Um. I I appreciate every question that all my peers have presented. They have echoed many of the things that I have wondered. So I don't have to then therefore ask. I've I've got a lot of information. We all do. Um, and we just have to try to make the best decision for our, our students, our staff, our admin, our community. And I know that we we will do that. So. Those, that's, that's what I have now and then we have comments.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brooks. Appreciate that. Uh, there are no other questions or comments. Um, with that, we will move on to the agenda. Um, the next item, action agenda. New business, return to in-person learn for school-dependent learners, select CTE programs and pre-K through the fourth grade. May I have a motion, please?
Sir. I make the motion.
I make the motion.
School Board of the City of Manassas approve the return to in-person learn to begin. Select CTE program, the EMT, cosmetology, auto technology, construction technology, criminal justice. For the nine-one-one dispatch certification, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. School-dependent learners, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one and pre-K through four grades, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, second by Mr. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve. The return to in-person learn to begin, select CTE programs, EMT, cosmetology, auto technology, construction technology, criminal justice, but nine-one-one dispatch certification. March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, school-dependent learners, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And pre-K through fourth grades, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevens.
Yeah, um. I'm trying to figure out how to word my question or my statement. We have a plan in place that we can schedule an emergency meeting to discuss. Taking those programs back to hybrid. Should we vote in favor of going hybrid? If we see an increase in infection. If we start seeing students getting sick or family members getting sick, we can schedule an emergency meeting to vote. To go back to virtual?
Yes. Mrs. Brooks, do you have anything?
No, I was just agreeing. Right.
Okay. Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Demaria.
Mr. Demaria.
Thank you, sir. Um. We've gotten a boatload of emails, especially today. Um. Some in favor of this, more against it. Uh, I understand that. Um. I think each and every one of us, I'm I'm not unique to this board. Um, we have done. A lot of reading, a lot of research, a lot of listening. Um, we got some more information today from the A- American Academy of Pediatrics. Um, that information has pushed me forward toward uh. Agreeing to this motion. Uh, I want everybody to know that we highly respect everybody's opinion. And this is very, very difficult. And we have considered everybody's opinion, at least I have, and I I I know these people well enough that I I know they have as well. Um, both ways, people that will vote for this and people that will vote against it. We are, we are torn. Uh, we want to do what's best for our kids and we're doing our very best to discover what that might be. Um, so I just want everybody to know that you all have our greatest respect. On your opinions for or against going hybrid, for or against staying virtual. Um, so um. Just because somebody votes in a way that you don't think that we should go. Um, please understand that this is very difficult on us and we're just doing our very best with as much information as we possibly have, possibly can get. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Demaria. Very well put. Other comments, questions, discussion before we vote? Um, Vice Chair Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer a position on remaining virtual. About public health. Since the pandemic began last year, one question has guided our decisions. What is best for students, faculty and staff? Throughout this pandemic, our goal has been to prioritize the safety and health of our students and our school family. And to ensure that academic learning is impacted as minimally as possible. When the effort to maintain safety and health outweighs the effort to learn, less learning will happen. Vaccines. Teachers were offered the opportunity to vaccinate and vaccines do put us closer to an in-person ready position. But vaccines aren't everything. Vaccines, along with other mitigation efforts, are components that we need, but metrics should also be factored in. Metrics, we are still in the red. The highest risk category. Transition. Transition from virtual learning to an in-person hybrid learning will be very disruptive to schedules. Time will be compromised due to asynchronous learning during the teacher training and setup and may contribute to a loss of learning overall. The timing of spring break is not ideal, but everyone needs this break. The loss of the current office hours format at the high school level is also a concern. I realize that this time would be offered um during another a portion of the class, but the rhythm of traditional office hours would be lost. We have to consider all that we have lost already and what further could happen by disrupting the current structure. As stated in one of the many letters that we read today. With virtual learning, we are safe. We can control our own environments. Students are learning and they are used, they are used to the distance learning pl- platform. Remaining in our current virtual learning format has a better promise of success for everyone. If we want our kids back in school, we need to reduce transmission and lower the number of new cases in our community. That is something that our school division may not have control over, but every person in our community does. Uh, because of these factors, I'm going to be voting no on a return to learn in person. Uh, I can support CTE programs and school-dependent learners, but I say no for pre-K through four and through five through twelve. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Seber. Uh, Ms. Stevens.
Um, I'm going to echo what Ms. Seberg said. If we could have school-dependent learners and CTE students come back. I vote in favor of that, but I can't vote in favor of the general population pre-K through twelve.
Okay, um, with with those statements, um, would the maker of the motion like to? Am I in the motion and we can do that if everyone agrees and have two different votes. So in essence, have two votes on these two things, separate the pre-K through four. Um. Motion from the. Other promotions, the CTE independent learners?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, but I'd like to keep my motion as is. So let's start on this and separate it.
Okay, so we'll, well, the motion, thank you. And the motion will remain as this. Mr. Demaria.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if we, uh, if this fails, um. People on the presiding side can make another motion to shorten it just to the first. So it it doesn't hurt to.
Yes.
To to take this vote, we can still uh take, add another motion to this if we would choose, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. I just wanted to give the both, um, the option to change it or vote on it, so. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, um, I will ask uh Mrs. Glazza to call for a roll call vote.
Chairman Willis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Seber.
Nay.
Mr. Demaria.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
Nay.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Nay.
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. Aye.
Thank you.
Um, if I count correctly, um, four ayes and three nays, so the ayes have it four to three and the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is return to in-person learn for grades five through twelve. May I have a motion on that? Item, please.
Sir, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the return to learn for grades five through twelve to begin April sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Maria, second by Mrs. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved return to in-person learn. For grades five through twelve to begin on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Williams.
I I know this is a very tough decision for everybody and. As Mrs. Seberg's uh stated earlier, we have had so many emails, um, many for, many against. Um, and then unfortunately, I was working all day. I caught up on all the emails this morning and then I worked all day and I came home after work to many more emails. And I thought I would just pop on right before this meeting. The last two e- emails we did get. Um, were in support of uh in-person, the option for in-person. Staying home is an option. It's a, that's what makes. Me feel very comfortable with the decision to return. Learning. We have lost. Lives um these past couple of weeks. One being my aunt. This has nothing to do with school. Uh, but. I was at her funeral this weekend and. We started talking about gifts. The gift. Of love, loving each other, caring for each other, the gift of hope. And the gift of life. And that just really honed in how important it is for us to take care of our students. Who do need to be in the classroom, even if it is twice a week. It gives them a little bit of ground to connect with the teacher, to connect with the peers that are there. And I just feel very strongly that that is the right decision. And again, if somebody really is uncomfortable with it, they've got the option to stay home. As far as our staff, this is going to be a challenge. Um, I feel that we are kind of, we are going to support you with facilitators and anything you need. Just ask. We are here to support you as well. Um, and I just, I feel very strongly about this. I always have and I I I continue to do. I mean, I can you continue to feel the same way. Uh, numbers are going down, cases are going down. Um. With vaccines, along with the natural curve of viruses. Where they kind of peak up in the winter and start to fall now. I think those two things together will really. Continue this uh decline trend. Through this, through the end of the school year. Um, with that, Mr. Chair, that's all I wanted to say.
Sorry about your, um, Mrs. Williams. Um, and thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. Other comments?
Y- yes, sir. Uh, uh. I hate to keep talking. Um. Almost as much as everybody hates to keep listening. This is terribly difficult and and I I I, as I said before the the last vote, um, we're doing our very best. Uh, going back to what uh Ms. Stevens asked about, we. Will continue, no matter what way this vote goes, we will continue to watch our numbers. And we can call an emergency meeting at any time and if our numbers don't continue to trend down. Um, this can all change. Uh, and it can change quickly. Uh, but I believe that we need to be prepared to be able to go back. I believe. We have enough kids that need to. Get into our buildings. Uh, I'll say get out of their homes and into our buildings that um. All of the trouble that this is going to be. Uh, and it's going to be some trouble and it's going to be difficult, especially on our teachers and our staff. Um. I I I believe those children need this desperately and I I I've I've studied the, the, the uh information that we've gotten. Um, and I believe that. The chances of transmission is extremely low. Um, and I believe the the chances of. Our kids. Mental health or their physical health, um, they they need some contact with other adults and they need to be in our buildings. Um, as much as possible. And um. Again, I I I'm very sorry to those people that think the other way and I could, I could sit here and make the argument the other way just as easily. Um, and I've done it with myself for the past two weeks. Uh, but I I I firmly believe we need to, the kids that need to come back need it desperately and that's why I'm uh. Uh, voting the way I I am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Demaria.
Thank you, Mr. Demaria.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
I would be remiss for speaking up and saying this. I'm sorry for all lives lost uh during this time period and virus, with the virus and so forth, but I just want to put it out there. Um, I want to make sure the narrative is clear. Um. Yes, we had a couple of emails that uh were in support of voting for a return to learn. But we had an overwhelming majority that said that we're against it. And I I just want the public to know that we we received those emails. I'll. Want to continue to be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollinsworth. And I think, Mrs. Brooks, you had your hand up.
I did. Yes, I did. Um, I just, I mean, my comment at this moment. Is that, yes, we have received many emails. That have said, you know, they prefer not to return to learn and we've received some that prefer to. I also realize that there's many people out there that need to, I mean, just to echo Mr. Demaria's comments. That desperately need to be in the classroom, need to have that contact. And there's the option to, to be virtual one hundred percent if a family feels that that's their best interest. And we also have the option to say, okay, the cases have risen, but at this moment. We need to make sure that those students. But at this moment, we need to make sure that those students, those families who, who need to have this, this opportunity to have this last bit, this last chance to just make it through the end of the school year, to, to feel that they have accomplished it, that they need to have that opportunity to, to do that in their school, in their classroom, in the environment that we have provided for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Stevens.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I really feel that I must. There's a population that we're forgetting about, and there's a population whose mental health we're forgetting about, and that's our teachers and school staff. The burden we're placing on them right now is enormous. We have to take a moment to recognize how our actions impact them as far as workload and mental health, because we have to remember they're family members as well, they're people as well. This is hard on them. Distance learning is hard on them, but what kind of burden will hybrid learning place on them? What are we tasking them to do? Is it enough for us to just say to our staff and our teachers, we know this is hard, but we believe in you, and we think you can do it? You can do it, it'll be a good job. So I really think we've got to remember those people, our teachers, our staff, who are shouldering, shouldering the burden every day. I'm sure many of them are working outside contract hours, whether it's lesson planning, answering emails, making phone calls, or working with students before and after school. They've already made huge sacrifices. We need to keep them in mind as we make the decisions we make.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Well put. Other comments or questions? Seeing that, as I want to do, I had a crazy day, and I just jotted down a bunch of thoughts. Hopefully they're coherent, but I will save those to my comments, for we vote. Just kind of show you where I'm coming from. But I do have some comments, and I think all the comments made tonight were very good and very pertinent. We all care, we want to do the best we can for our kids, and we care about our kids, we care about our staff, and our families and their safety. But with that, if there are no more comments, I will ask Mrs. Garza for a roll call vote.
Chairman Williams.
No.
Vice Chair Seabird.
No.
Mr. De Maria.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
No.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
No.
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks.
Aye.
Three ayes and four nos, so the motion does not carry to return to in-person learn for grades five through 12 at this time. Thank you all for your consideration. This is not easy. I know how hard it is, and how much time you all spend on this, board members, staff, families, parents. It's not easy, but we will, we shall move on. The next item on the agenda, behind the wheel driver's education instruction, and I will ask Mr. De Maria to read this motion, because we kind of talked about it beforehand.
Thank you, sir. I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waived second reading and approved the behind the wheel driver's education instruction.
Aye.
Aye.
You mean second?
Motion by Mrs. De Maria, and a second by Mrs. Williams. We got you, we got you. The motion is that the school board of the city of Manassas waived second reading and approved the behind the wheel driver's education instruction. I may have a roll call vote. Was there any discussion?
Right discussion, I should say.
Uh, Miss Stevens.
I'm sorry to keep asking questions. Drive, behind the wheel drivers ed, that's, that's a very foreign thing to me. I haven't thought about it a lot. It's required by the state. What will it look like in this new socially distanced world? If, if somebody can just give me an overview, so I can get a mental image of what behind the wheel is going to look like?
Dr. Devin, would you like me to answer that? Okay. So the mitigation strategies, there would be one student in the vehicle with the instructor, and the VDOE has reduced the number of, I think they call it the number of opportunities or the number of times that a student has to be in the, on the road. And they also have to, we have also installed cameras in the vehicles to support that process as well. And I'll let Dr. Kramp talk about any additional mitigation or specifics with, for that as well.
You did a great job. Not much to add, just to clarify a little bit that if approved, cameras will be installed in the vehicles as an extra, you know, layer of protection, since it is one teacher and one student. Typically, in a more normal situation, there are multiple students in the car. And to Dr. Saunders's point, there were seven hours of driving and seven hours of observation. What the state waived was the seven hours of observation for behind the wheel, so it's just the actual driving hours that are required. And yes, both teacher and student would be required to wear a mask, and we would sanitize, you know, handles, the steering wheel, all of those things in between drivers.
And you probably don't know this answer. Do you know about approximately how many students would be eligible for behind the wheel? I, I know that's a big, I
I mean, a large number would be our entire 10th grade. I mean, at some point, the majority of our 10th graders are eligible for behind the wheel. Certainly, some of those may have already, you know, worked with an outside agency or private contractor to get those hours, so it's hard to say how many of, you know, all of our 10th graders would still need or want that service from the school level.
And is there a timeline that they have to have it completed within?
No, there, there is not. And I would also indicate, Miss Stevens, the availability would be based on the teacher availability as well in the process. So, you know, there's, there's really no way that we would get the entire, you know, 10th grade in, but it does, if the teachers are available, then it does provide an option for our students to participate with teacher availability.
Thank you. You gave me an education on behind the wheel that I did not previously have, so thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
I just wanted to comment, given the business I'm in, I'm in cars with people outside of my bubble quite often, and the, because that's where my mind goes. So my, I, I just wanted to tell you throughout this whole pandemic, we just wear masks and we roll down the windows, and we have had absolutely no issues or transmission due to being in a car with somebody else. So I just wanted to pass that off.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Appreciate that. And good questions, Mrs. Stevens. I didn't acknowledge that earlier, but thank you. Other questions or comments before we vote? What would this entails? No hands up? Okay, so we've motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the behind the wheel drivers' education instruction. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chair Seabird.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. De Maria.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Garza. The ayes have it seven zero, and the motion carries. The final and last item on our agenda before board member comments, I'm going to ask Mr. De Maria to make that motion also, because we talked about this as well. De Maria, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waived second reading and approve spectator at sporting events.
Second. Second. Second.
Motion by Mrs. De Maria, I guess I was a second to Mrs. Stevens.
Second to Mrs. Stevens.
That the school board of the city of Manassas waived second reading and approved spectators at sporting events. Is there any discussion on this, which has been all over the news? Mrs. Seabird.
Yes, I just wanted to say we received a lot of letters, messages on this topic as well, and I don't know anybody who would be against it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. De, thank you, Mrs. Seabird. Raise the same points, Mr. De Maria.
I just want to clarify for our listening audience, we've had this discussion over the weekend quite a bit of the seven board members and Dr. Newman. The, the motion is to approve spectators, but there are some rules and regulations, both from the state and it's going to be from Osborne High School. Each participant will get two tickets to the game. According to state rules, the cheerleaders are part, are not participants, they're spectators, and so, and their parents will get two tickets. So we're trying to limit it to, to, to the outside sports to below the 250, which is what the state government is telling us that we, we can't go over. So we're going to be quite a bit below that, which is good. And then the indoor sports, we're to be consistent with the outdoor sports, they will have two tickets as well. I believe our only indoor sport is volleyball, and I believe they've got about 12 girls on the team, so that would put us at 24, and the maximum in, inside is 25. If we have 13 or 14 girls on the team, the team will have to figure that out. But inside is, the, the maximum is 25, outside the maximum is 250. Inside, we're going to be touch and go with that. Outside, we're going to be very safe. Thank you, sir.
Very welcome, Mr. De Maria. Thanks for explaining the machinations of it all. Appreciate that. Just in case anyone's not clear, when Mr. De Maria said there were discussions, there were no discussions of the group board members at any time at all. It was just singular one-on-one discussions, you know, individually, so don't go, don't get it twisted, anybody listening. But thank you, Mr. De Maria. That's a great point. It is an important issue, as Mrs. Vice Chair Seabird pointed out. Any other questions?
Thank you for clarifying that for me and keeping me out of trouble. Any more trouble than I'm already in. Thank you, sir.
Hey, you know, you keep us out of trouble all the time, so we appreciate you, man. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, I will ask Mrs. Garza to take a roll call vote, please, on this motion.
Chairman Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chair Seabird.
Aye.
Mr. De Maria.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks.
Aye.
Thank you.
The ayes have it seven zero, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much for your time in consideration of this motion. The last item on the agenda is board member comments, and we will start with our wonderful, I guess, energetic student reps who hung around for this kind of long meeting. You know, we appreciate you very much, and I will start with Officer Flores.
Thank you, Chairman Williams and the board. So I first wanted to say thank you for making these decisions for us, because as adults, you guys have more sense into what you guys are doing than us. So I just wanted also to agree what was like what Mrs. Williams said, that right now there's been so many deaths as well with such as with mental health. So recently, if you guys don't know, right now, there was a friend and a student, a daughter that recently passed away, and I wanted to send all my respects to her. And as well, I just wanted to encourage students to, and adults as well, because no matter what age you are, you will, not like you specifically, if you think that, but people will suffer with mental health no matter what age they go through or anything. And I feel like that's something they should consider in looking for help and knowing that they are not alone in this, because there might be someone that has the same case. So I encourage like students and adults to talk to anyone if they're going through something tough as well, and to know that their purpose in this life, you might not see it right now, because it's like the hardest times that we're going through, but there's going to be a light at the end of this. And hopefully, I encourage our students to look out for each other honestly and to check up on each other, no matter if you guys aren't that close, but at least send a text, say, I hope you have a good day, or I hope you're doing well, and just encouraging them to take a time of their day to, to just think things through and to breathe, listen to music, do something that calms them down as well. And as well, to parents, thank you for always being there for their students as well, and I hope parents have that like mentality to think, to just encourage their students as well, while they're kids, because sometimes I know parenting is not easy for them as well. And then knowing, for example, for us as teenagers, we have different ways of being, and we have different moods, and I hope with each other, you guys can communicate as well to like check up on your kids as well. And I know it's not easy right now, like I said before, but hopefully we'll get through this as well. And I know this decision wasn't so easy for you guys to make to return to school, because there's so many sides to this, and as well as mental health, or of course, as health-wise as well, because for me, knowing my mom wouldn't let me go, because we have, we have had sick people as well in my house, and for example, my sister caught Corona as well once, so it was hard for her as well. And also, besides all this, to spread some joy at least, I want to encourage you guys to go see the talent show that just came out for Osborne as well, to go see our amazing talented students that sang and did so many things as well. They're incredibly like talented, and it's sad to know that we couldn't see them like this year in person, because I know last year, the talent show was so fun. I loved going to talent shows. I'm going to miss that. And also, I wanted to say congratulations to our Winter Sports seniors, and I know some of them have been varsity four years or no matter what, but I wanted to congratulate them for having that courage to go out and mostly during this time to participate in a sport. And I know some of them go to sports as an outlet, like to not be sad, to distract themselves as well. And also, I wanted to tell the seniors that we're almost done with this year, and hopefully they can push through these last three months. And if they have to get scholarships done, look for help with other teachers, go to office hours, anything else that they need help, as well as the lowerclassmen and anyone else in another grade or anything else. And as well, I just want to say thank you to the board as well for always having a positive side in the negative places that we've been mostly like right now, and everyone that has put effort into, like the slides that you guys present of like returning back to school and everything, because I know that's not easy, and it's, it's time consuming, and sometimes you have to think that through more than being with your family at times, because that is basically what you're dependent on. And I know it's been hard, but thank you so much for everything you guys are doing, and thank you for always being there to encourage us, us as students, because I remember always seeing Mr. Williams or another school board member going to the field hockey games and encouraging us and everything, and it was really nice. And I'm going to miss those times, and hopefully everything gets better by next year, so we can go back to normal. So yeah, thank you.
Very well put, Mr. Flores. I do miss the field hockey games, so hopefully this time, well, not next year, we'll be back at it, but thank you. Ms. Tenali.
Good evening to the school board, and I wanted to first congratulate the par, par award winners and the apple award winners. It's already so difficult to teach virtually, so thank you for going above and beyond. I also wanted to talk about a really serious topic, which is mental health. I know this is a really hard time for everyone. Everyone is going through a lot in school. Virtually is already so difficult. Everyone has different circumstances. Some people have jobs, some people have siblings to help, and household chores, and I want to let everyone know you're not alone. And I want to let everyone know you're not alone. Communication is key. It's really important, especially now. If your mental health is not the best right now, please try talking to someone close to you because it really helps when you know you're not alone and that someone is there. You can even talk like even Samira, Tanya, like will be here for you or your counselors because they're a really good support system. So please try to reach out because your mental health is more important than school. And yeah, I also wanted to say happy school board appreciation month. Thank you for all the difficult decisions you made, especially tonight. I know that decision wasn't really easy to make, so thank you. I also wanted to say thank you for everything you do for the community. We wouldn't be where we are today without you. So thank you so much. Lastly, make sure you're staying safe. Make sure you're wearing your mask. Make sure you're putting on hand sanitizer and distancing yourself for not only for your safety, but for the safety of others. So because if you do that, we'll most likely get back together as soon as possible. And as always, your small businesses, they really need it right now. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanoli. I appreciate your comments. And I'll just say briefly before I move on to the members. For both of you, your intelligence, your compassion makes me proud to be associated with MCPS. You guys are incredible. So thank you for your time and your contributions. We really appreciate you. With that, I'm going to the board members, other board members. Mr. Damarion, you're first on my list.
Thank you, sir. And thanks for making me go after the girls. You know, trying to top them is going to be very difficult. The school appreciation, the when this first started, I was always against it because we don't need to hear about all that. But the way it's evolved and the way that the schools are telling us about what they're doing, I very much enjoy that. It was great. The dean presentation was kind of cool when the kids all held up their hands and they were all painted. And at that point, I was kind of glad they were virtual because then we didn't have to clean that up. I bet you their parents weren't real thrilled with that. The Weems video, we don't have that. I looked on our agenda and we don't have the Weems video. So if we could get that forwarded to us so that we can watch that one as well. Alba and Lee. Every year we say the same thing and every year it comes from the heart. You guys are so special to us. Alba, you make everything work. You're always there. You're always there with a smile. You're always there with a joke if you need to. And you're kind of the glue that keeps us together. And I deeply, deeply appreciate you. And Lee, even though you're always there, so she doesn't have to do a lot, but she has in the past. But without our clerks, we would be lost and all the time, not just this week. You are deeply appreciated. Even when I make fun of you for whatever I can figure out to make fun of you for, I'm just teasing. We all deeply appreciate you and love you very much. Thank you very much. These votes tonight were very difficult. I'm trying to think if they were the vote most difficult I've ever had to make, and they are. I can't think of anything else other than maybe an expulsion hearing. I am happy, I think, with the way the votes went. I'm very proud of this board for voting their conscience. And that's a very difficult thing to do sometimes. And the side, when I'm on the the losing side, so to speak, I'm behind the action 100%. I am proud of this board and no matter which way it goes, we are one. We are we are, we have to show that we are a family just like the rest of our system is a family. And we've had our minor disagreements done very well and we voted differently. And we're all going to come together and get behind the results of those votes. And we will always do that because that's who we are. And we can have our disagreements, but we don't argue. We don't fight. We don't squabble. We don't yell at each other. We get behind each other when that vote is done. Spring break is coming up. We did have a surge after the last break. I didn't go anywhere for Christmas. I'm not going anywhere for spring break mainly because I don't have a spring break. My wife isn't going anywhere for spring break. We have to take this thing seriously. Everybody has to take it seriously. We're all in this together. Please, please stay home. Please be safe. We've got to get these numbers down. If we do have a surge after spring break, that original vote we had for pre-K and CTE up to four is going to be changed. I'm 100%. I will vote the other way to stay virtual. If we can't do our jobs and parents and do your job, be a parent, keep your kids safe. And let's get those numbers down because the next step is going to be August. And in August, it sure would be nice to go back to school. But if these numbers go up over spring break and then like the superintendent said, if they go up over in June and July, August, we're not going to be able to go back. So please do your part. Do your part and isolate yourself as much as possible and wear your mask and wash your hands. And let's get back to some normalcy to where this vote would be 7-0, whichever direction it needs to be. Thank you, sir.
Very well put, Mr. Damarion. And I just want to add and kind of jump in here for a second and say that part of I think our board's collegiality and respect stems from the folks who've been on the board the longest, which is actually you. I think that you setting an example of camaraderie and collegiality and disagreeing in an honest, open, authentic fashion has helped all of us. So I thank you for that because it's been very helpful. And I'm not going to act as if we're better than anybody else, but I will say that if you observe what's going on with other boards in the state of Virginia, we are by far the most cohesive in terms of making decisions. Now that everyone doesn't care, because we all care about our students and our staff. We've done a good job. So I appreciate that and I appreciate all of you working towards that and appreciate your example, Mr. Damarion, because you are the one that's been here the longest and you helped set the tone. So thank you for that. Even though I know you don't like being honored like that, I do appreciate it. Next on my list is Mr. Hollingsworth.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hard to follow. Mr. Damarion, you pretty much covered everything. I just want to thank you. This is my first school board appreciation. So I wanted to say thank you to all the all the students that put together all those great videos and principals that brought them to our attention. And I'm very thankful and I appreciate that. I want to thank Ms. Garza for introducing me and carefully guiding me into this position, preparing me for this role. I also want to thank all the winners today that were recognized. And I also want to recognize, I want to acknowledge Chris Thornton, an Osborne alum for a great game he played for JMU this past weekend. And it just goes to show the level of excellence that comes out of Manassas City. And you know, I'm very proud to be here and I'm very proud to represent the best I can. With that, I want to say thank you to everyone on this board. Yeah, this is very tough. I didn't anticipate it to be this tough. You know, I thought you could join, run for the school board and stay on the sideline of the football field and look cute in a jumpsuit. And it has proven not to be the case. And it is definitely some hard work and very tough decisions. And if I offended anyone, I apologize. That was not my intent. I just want to make sure that we're transparent and that we're doing the work of the community. And I just simply ask that the community following Mr. Damarion's words can stay vigilant and keep working so we can defeat this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth, and thanks for speaking from your heart. We want transparency, authenticity. So thank you. Next, Mr. Brooks.
Sorry, I was trying to navigate to the unmute button. First, I want to say congratulations to all of the Apple winner, you know, winners for the quarter and the pair winners. Thank you for everything you've done for our schools. And thank you to the schools for the appreciation videos and presentations you did for the school board. It was so, it was so touching to see all of the all of the students. It was, it just, it was in my day to see the students and to, you know, be able to connect with them. And of course, to our clerk and assistant clerk, you guys rock. I don't know where I would be without you. You, you know, especially Ms. Garza, who has bailed me out of so many things, including an ice storm. So, you know, thank you to you guys. As far as the return to learn, I know that it has been heart wrenching for all of us to try to decide what would be the best for everyone. We have students to consider. We have staff to consider. We have teachers to consider. We have admin to consider. There's just so many different people that we have to take, that we have to, you know, consider. Like this is their lives. This is their livelihood. I've seen many emails of it's too much, too little, too late. There are so many people who this is, they desperately need to be back in the setting. And, you know, I really want us to be able to consider all of the things, but at the same time, there's no way for us to continue to, it's hard. That's what I want to leave it as. It's hard for all of us. We will do the best we can for all of you, for the community, for the teachers, the staff, the students. And you are our goal. You are who we want to make sure you have what you need.
Very well put, Mrs. Brooks. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. The first thing I wanted to do was share a quote from a teacher blog that was posted in the Virginia Early Childhood Education website. And I think it's really important and I think it talks about where we are right now. And let me start. These aren't the same people we sent home last spring. They have survived a terrible loss by becoming new people. It isn't easy. As schools reopen, let's begin by celebrating who they have become. Then make it our business to understand them as they are right now. We can't let the hyperventilating over how far our child children have fallen behind causes us to plow ahead as if a return to normal is even possible. Because everything has changed and the children we teach have changed as well. So as we go back in classrooms, let's celebrate who we have now and not worry about who they were before the pandemic. They're new people. They've changed. They've grown. They've learned. And it's up to us to nurture that. The next thing I wanted to say is thank you to everyone who sent an email. I haven't replied to a lot of them. I just haven't had time. I'm a teacher getting ready to reopen, so my hours are very short. But I've read every letter and every decision I've made has been based, has been based in part on what people are telling me through their emails. And I want to give a special shout out to the Met students who sent emails. I was so impressed to read your emails today when I was during my planning time and after the end of the school day. I was so impressed. You were so well spoken. And I think it's great that you are already taking a role in advocating for yourselves, your peers and your community. Kudos to you. Keep it up. I look forward to getting emails from you every meeting. I want to know how you're doing and I want to hear your voice because your voice is important and it's a voice we all ought to hear. As to our families, I know you're struggling. We're all struggling. If you are struggling, one of the first places you can turn to is your children's school. We have resources we can get you in touch with to help you out with whatever you might need. Whether it's mental health, whether it's housing support, whether it's food, whether it's childcare, we have access to resources that we can direct you towards. It's part of what we do. Our counselors are amazing. They step up each and every single day for us, for our students, for our families. This is what they're here for. Give them a call if you need to. Don't feel ashamed. Don't feel bad because you're not the only one. There are so many other people in the same boat. And then to Alba and Lee, thank you for all you do. Way back when, when we could all meet in person and I had just joined the board, I sat on the very end of the dais next to Alba and I can't tell you how many times I would quietly like lean over and ask for her help on something because I didn't know quite what I was doing. So Alba, thank you so much. I miss those days. I can't wait till we have those days back where we all actually get to see each other as people. And Alba and Lee, like Tim said, y'all are the glue that holds us together. I don't know how we would get from point A to point B, whether it's in person or virtually without you. Alba, I look for your emails before every school board meeting because I know that I can't get in if I don't get that email. So you keep us doing what we need to do and you make it all possible. Congratulations to our Apple and Pear winners during virtual instruction. It's a tough job. Y'all are really, really up to it. And thank you for those presentations from all our principals. They were really touching. They really got me in the heart. I love seeing the kids and I love seeing the kids do special things and shine at what they do and shine at who they are. You could see their personalities in each and every one of those videos. So thank you because they remind us what's so important. But otherwise, stay safe, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, stay home if you don't feel well. And if you have the opportunity, get vaccinated.
Very well put, Mrs. Stevens. And thank you for the advice about contacting the children's school if you need help because our schools are very, very good resources for lots of different things. So thank you for mentioning that. Very helpful. Next up, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, I have to congratulate the Apple and Pear winners. And also say thank you to Mrs. Garza and Mrs. Miller. If it wasn't for you keeping me on track, I don't know what I would do. So thank you very much. I want to just, I'm going to keep mine very short because everybody said everything that I've also wanted to say. But I felt like Dr. Jones said it best in her presentation. We make decisions which we feel after all of our research and discussions that the decisions we make are best for the students. And I felt, I still feel that getting all these kids back to school, even two days a week, would be the best decision for the kids. But I am proud to be a part of this board and I'm proud of every one of you because I know how hard you work on making your decisions. And with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very well. Mrs. Williams, thank you for your time, your energy and your assistance also in making this board work. Next, Vice Chair Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo the congratulations to our Apple and Pear winners. It's so unseeing. I like the format. I don't know if Al does that or Billy Kay does that, but I like being able to see their face. And some of them were here in person. That was good to see. Also, thank you to our clerks, Alba and Lee. We appreciate you so much. And I just want to say thank you to all my fellow school board members. I do appreciate you. And thank you to the families, the students and the teachers that wrote in about the return to learn in person. It does make a difference. Your comments are very much appreciated. It's important to know that even though a school board decision may not be one you agree with and you wrote in and you said, this is the way I want, this is what I want, this is what I need. If it doesn't go your way, we still have to If it doesn't go your way, we still have to accept this decision and move forward. Um, sometimes it goes your way and sometimes it doesn't. And, um, I think we had a little bit of everything tonight, but, um, I, I want to say thank you to the people that wrote in because your voice does matter to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Seabird. Very, very well put. And I will be a little bit longer, um, because again, I've just kind of, I'll say freehand, but that not freehand, precomputer, uh, right before the meeting, just typed up some of my thoughts that kind of guided me on, um, the decision that we came to tonight. But before I get to that, um, I want to congratulate the Apple and Pear winners. Um, you all are awesome. We appreciate what you do for our students. Um, principals, thank you for the presentations. Mr. Maria mentioned it, um, that he likes to change his format and I, I love it also. Um, I love hearing what you all are doing. Um, and students are life. I mean, they just, just seeing them is, as Stephen said, just made my day. So thank you for the presentations. They were awesome. Um, to our clerks, I think I said, um, the inimitable Miss Garza, I'll use that same adjective for Mrs. Miller. And you all are awesome. We appreciate you. Um, you hold us together. So thank you for all you do. We look forward to continue working with you and, uh, hopefully we don't make your lives too difficult. Uh, but you are excellent what you do and, um, you make things flow seamlessly. So Mrs. Garza and Mrs. Miller, I thank you both. I appreciate you. And my thoughts were, are thus, um, I wrote, I always endeavor to put the safety and well-being of our students and staff first. And I prefer to err on the side of caution. We were the first jurisdiction in Northern Virginia to go 100% virtual this year and will be the last to go back. The best we can do is listen to the experts. However, that has been a challenge because of the sheer volume and analysis of many experts. Information has not always been transparent and it definitely has not been consistent. Thus, it's no wonder that there's so much confusion about COVID and how it spreads. The B D H, Department of Health Metrics are helpful, but as Dr. Newman mentioned, they're not dispositive. This week, there are two primary indicators are in the red zone, which is the highest risk. Um, but the three primary indicators, secondary indicators, excuse me, are in lowest risk. So you have two in the highest risk and three in the lowest risk. It's hard to determine what, how to go forward. This is complicated by the fact that many people have opinions based on their understandings of things like the Brazilian and UK strands and variants. And there's a lot of false and misleading information being disseminated as facts. And the discussion is further muddled by the federal government trying to get schools to open as soon as possible. And the government and State Department of Education, um, I wrote prodding, um, and then I thought a bit of it and I said, no, I'll leave it there. Prodding us, folks to open up on March 15th, which is an artificial deadline, um, which it's great to have expectations, but because of the nature of this, I think it's not helpful at all because it gives parents expectation and staff and students that we're gonna open by a certain date, um, without giving us the resources, um, to, to do so and explaining why it should be thus. Um, and then there's discord about experts, about instruction and how to go forward. Um, so some of the things I thought about before I made my votes tonight. Um, one, pediatric experts largely agree that it's safe to open schools to elementary students for full-time in-person instruction as long as safety measures are followed. Universal masking, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning, inadequate ventilation. And this is even when there's widespread infection in the community. There is also an increasing mental health crisis among our students and pediatric experts express concern about depression, hunger, anxiety, isolation and learning loss. My wife asked me not to mention her tonight, but I didn't mention her the whole night. But I will say that as a pediatrician, I've heard her articulate this to me, um, from both sides. Mental health crisis and the fact that kids need to be in school. So, um, if a person who deals with this every day, um, with our students sees this, then it's definitely um, an issue which is, is hard to, to reconcile. Um, please note that we may not have all students vaccinated by the beginning of the 2021, 2022 school year. So by August, most of our kids most likely won't be vaccinated. So these issues aren't going away anytime soon. The CDC has stated that vaccination of teachers is not necessary to return to school. Um, our teachers have had the option to do that and it definitely gives them comfort, but they also have family members at home. So that's something else to consider. Um, something that I don't want to give short shrift to, and I think people should honestly take time to consider, especially because it affects some communities more than others. Um, there is a tangible and valid fear and concern about in-person interaction, uh, from students, staff and families. And an even greater fear sometimes of the vaccine itself. Um, I know folks who just won't get it, who don't trust it. And that's a battle that a lot of medical folks are, are fighting right now. So those are issues that play into what folks want to do with their children. Um, there's a discernible difference between the incidence and spread of COVID in younger students and middle, high school students. That has been a consistent message from the beginning. I don't think it's gotten out there as much, but that's something we definitely should consider going forward. Um, schools have opened throughout the country and some are operating safely. Some schools have done it. So it's not impossible to do. And I'm sure our folks will do the best they can for our students that are in the building to, to keep them safe and to keep our staff, uh, safe. And the last note that I wrote, um, was 500K are dead. You know, that's unimaginable. Um, the best we can do to honor them is to do it. All you folks have said, wear a mask. Just by wearing a mask, we can make such a big difference in this. And we've done this from the beginning. We would not be here where we are now. Um, and then the last thing I typed up, um, was that this is not easy and won't get any easier in August. All we can do is make the best decisions we can with information we have. Amanda Gorman said in her inauguration poem, um, for while we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us. Um, my eyes are being part of a community which is going to go forward, work together, make the best decisions for our students, our students, our students, um, our staff. And I say students more than once on purpose because I'm there while we do what we do. Um, but then our staff is very, very, very important to us. And Mrs. Stephen articulated this earlier. Uh, we need to be cognizant of how they feel because we may feel a certain way, um, but they are on the front lines and that's something we need to consider as well, them and their families. Um, but we want to make the most, uh, informed choices for our community and hopefully we can, uh, continue to do so. And then we all have tried to do that. We have um, our students and our, their families and our staff and their families, uh, at the forefront of our minds constantly. And we will try to do the best we can to make the best decisions we can. Um, that was just my free flirt for meeting today. So, um, with that, um, I will ask for motion for adjournment.
Sir, I moved the school board, uh, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Um, Mr. Di Maria, I'll give the second, Mrs. Brooks, uh, that the school board, the city of Manassas meeting adjourned for this evening. Um, may I have a roll call vote and that motion, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes, our chairman Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chair Seabird.
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Brooks.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. The eyes have at seven zero and at nine 20 P M. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening and thank you all for your time and your energy and your compassion. I appreciate it. Happy good evening.